I'll call this meeting the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Uh, roll call please, Mr. Peter.
Here.
Aileen?
Here.
Good enough.
Here.
Janka?
Schwartz?
Here. Please join us for a moment of silence so throughout today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll first interchange a motion on the agenda received as proposed.
Right.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or question? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. Next we'll move on to public comments if there's anybody in the boardroom or online that wishes to make a public comment on something that's not an agenda item, uh, please do so at this time. Hearing done, uh, we will move on to presentations. Uh, the first presentation today is from the Rooted Carrot Co-op.
Morning, um, I'm Lisa Nelson and this is Dave Shatfordly and we are here representing the Rooted Carrot Co-op Market. We're both member owners and we serve on the board and we just want to thank you for taking the time to hear a little bit more about the co-op today. We, we're here to tell you about who we are and, um, I think as we highlight more about the co-op today, you'll see several ways that, um, our mission and our values really do, um, support and reflect a lot of what I see as your stated values and mission, uh, with the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors. Our values include local commitment, inclusivity, education, and sustainability. And like I said, I think you'll see as we go on that we overlap with a lot of your values as well. We've, um, the, the co-op has been in the process of becoming a reality for 10 years and we see that as a celebration of dedication and support. We have 1,200 member owners and a few more. Um, we're closer than ever to becoming a reality and you can see our achievements today. We've raised over a million dollars for this project. Um, we, and people have invested over 30,000 volunteer hours. We ask our volunteers to self-report and many of them are humble. So I know that is a really low ball number, um, but it's the largest, we see it as the largest grassroots effort in the Cedar Valley. So at this point, our foundation is really set to fulfill the promises that we made to our community, but we need some support to continue to really move this across the finish line and find the perfect home for our store. Co-ops are important to communities because they're economic engines. As you can see, every $1,000 spent at a food co-op generates $1,604 in economic activity locally. All the money that's spent at a co-op stays in the local community. It doesn't go to a corporate office in any other place. It stays within the community. And with our 1,200 plus member owners, we also have 75 business partners who support our efforts. Co-ops also do two and a half times more local vis- business with local farms and producers. And so that's really a big emphasis for us is to keep that, um, is to really work with local producers.
We believe that the Rooted Carrot Co-op will help to strengthen the economy of Black Hawk County majorly by buying directly from local and regional farmers. And this will enhance the farming community and give them more options, uh, for distributing their local produce. We'll work with producers and businesses in ensuring that dollars spent within the co-op stay within our community. And we will be investing in local jobs by prioritizing community hiring, providing fair wages and benefits, and supporting small business development. When we begin, uh, and find our site and, uh, build our building, which we are hoping to be about an 8,500 square foot building with equipment, uh, and with equipment, estimated a three and a half million dollars investment in the community. Estimated annual tax revenue would be somewhere in 90 to 100,000 dollars, projected annual sales of 4 million dollars, and an estimated annual regional food sales of 840,000 dollars. Co-ops estimate that charitable debt donations for our size would be approximately 20,000 dollars a year and we would also be creating approximately 40 high-paying jobs.
Our co-op will also address the need for a community-based grocery option. We're going to be offering again, we've mentioned the locally sourced products quite a bit, um, providing convenient access to nutritious and sustainably sourced foods. Within that, we'll also be doing education, which we already do with our member owners in the community through social media, um, fall food festivals and those kinds of things to help, um, expand the reach of our local producers, get new people interested and knowing about all of the products and things that are available here locally. Um, it's really exciting to see all the things that people are doing and the way that a lot of our producers are branching out. One thing that really also came to the fore during COVID-19 that we're all aware of was the supply chain issues that, that were impacting, um, accessibility to healthy foods. And we all, I think, realized how important the resilience is in that particular stream especially. There were several stories that, um, were lifted up by the, an organization called the National Cooperative Grocers and they really illustrated that local food co-ops were in a better position to function and provide for people's needs because they have those close relationships established with local growers. They were able to keep their store stocked, um, better than, um, our conventional grocers. So we really see this co-op as a piece of that resilience effort and a piece of that, um, supply chain so that when things happen that are unpredictable, the co-op is in a better position, they're much more nimble to react and to continue to provide for the needs of people.
Community is a big part of what the co-op is about and, um, it will become a community hub, places where people meet, people are educated about, uh, the food, about health, and about a lot of other things because it's just a place where we join together. We'll be building partnerships with local businesses and organizations. Uh, we work with the university, local farmers, and local suppliers, and even tourism because, uh, co-ops in towns and cities have noticed and we've talked to, uh, managers, uh, of, uh, city managers that have said that having a co-op in their town has helped them to attract people to their community because it says something about the community and that's part of what we want to try to achieve too. Um, we'll be strengthening the thriving local food movement and we want to ensure that our region remains at the forefront of, uh, the shift toward local and sustainable food. Uh, we've talked to local suppliers who said that if the co-op, and we don't like to use the word if, we say when the co-op opens, we would, they would be increasing their production capabilities. We stand ready to bring a transformative grocery option to the Cedar Valley with over 1,200 dedicated members. We have the community's support and the vision to make the Rooted Carrot Co-op Market a reality. This co-op will strengthen our local economy, improve access to healthy, fresh food, and create a hub for community connection and innovation. Your support will ensure that this project moves forward, driving economic growth, enhancing health, and fostering a stronger Cedar Valley. And I think that together with the support of the community, with the county, and with the city governments, we can bring this vision to life and create lasting benefits for our community. As we move forward, um, our two biggest needs are site and funding. The first step is the site and indications are that we may be very close, um, and that something could be happening this next year as far as finding a site. And when we acquire that site, we'll be starting a campaign, uh, a capital campaign. And after seeing our presentation, we hope that you see that you can, that there would be a place where the supervisors and the county could help with, uh, it could be funding, it could be any other things, advice, all sorts of different things that you could help, uh, to support the Rooted Carrot Co-op. And, um, we would be glad to hear from you as far as if you have any suggestions as to other partners in the county or in the state that, uh, would be helpful in getting us to our goal. And that's our presentation, so, thank you, uh, and we hope, uh, to hear from you and figure out, uh, how you can support the Rooted Carrot Co-op.
Thank you, thank you for everything you're doing. I, I joined in the first wave of membership when it was getting started and, um, it's so impressive that, um, you've been able to not just jump into, but put a lot of thoughtfulness into all the steps are being taken. Um, I think that's going to ensure the success and the fact that there's over 1,200 members is really exciting and I know that when I travel, um, I look and I see if there's a co-op in that town, I'm going to go visit it because it's, um, provides interesting and exciting food that reflects that community and so it's, I'm really a big fan and appreciative what you're doing.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next we'll move on to, uh, department highlights of 2024, continuation of last week's presentations. Uh, first up is Human Resources.
Yeah, alright. Okay, good morning. I did look at the agenda and see that on first, so. Alright, um, so, uh, for Human Resources, my name is Amanda Fezemeyer, HR Director for Black Hawk County, here to talk about our year in review for 2024. So just a reminder, a few activities that we do in Human Resources ranges from recruitment, talent acquisition and retention, labor relations, it's administering policies, benefits, compensation, classification, uh, leave such as FMLA, military, other leave of absences. We handle employee training and development, um, employee injuries and work comp claims is still a segment that we, uh, work closely with now with our safety coordinator in facilities. We handle internal investigations, um, as well as external ones, um, and also, uh, lead the way for, uh, how departments can handle performance management and discipline. Lastly, we look at ADA accommodations and the interactive process as well as temporary alternate duty assignments, so. Uh, to kick off just a couple of highlights that we had for 2024, um, earlier this year we completed the collective bargaining negotiations with all of our unions. Uh, here you can see we've got Unit 1, which is represented by PPME, that's our clerical union. Unit 4 is Teamsters and that's, uh, supported by Roads and Facilities. Unit 5 is our Public Safety Union, also under Teamsters. Unit 6, 7, and 8 is all represented by ASME and that's our attorneys, conservation of public health. Um, kind of the unique thing that we, uh, did this negotiation that we haven't done in the past is we were very open and transparent about utilizing data to drive decisions with regards to wages. So I'm very proud of that accomplishment and the board's efforts in supporting the complic- the countywide compensation and classification study. Uh, we were able to make a lot of adjustments and, um, come together at the table with all of our unions to recognize areas that we had gaps in wages and try to get closer to that, uh, market average when it comes to, uh, the wages here for Black Hawk County. And I think, as you'll see later on, we're seeing the benefits of that, um, with our retention, so. We do have a new union that we'll be bargaining with, um, in January and I did just hear from the representative from IBW, um, so we will be meeting with them early to mid-January and Mike Galloway will be assisting in leading that as well. Um, but the rest of these contracts are all five-year contracts and we've got wage reopeners, um, in year three, I believe, for the last two, so. Next highlight I want to touch on is once we got through negotiations, uh, which we also spend a lot of time, uh, with our finance team on the budgeting aspect of that, we're looking forward to a little bit easier, uh, known figures since all those, uh, wages are locked in for the next couple of years. But, once we were done with, um, collective bargaining, we hit right into our software implementations. We had three big ones this year. Uh, NeoGov, uh, was our new applicant tracking system and that was a change from Civic HR. We got to work closely with IT on that process. Uh, we also got to work closely with payroll on our E's online benefit enrollment, which we kicked off in May. And, um, so now all benefits are done online, excuse me. And that has been a, um, a really successful transition. Very user-friendly for new hires, for current employees. If you have a qualifying event for open enrollment, you did have everybody go through open enrollment and it's a great opportunity for everybody to see the benefits that we have and that we offer because I think sometimes those get lost, especially the fringe benefits like, whether it's deferred comp, life insurance, um, we've got legal services, things like that. So it's a great way to kind of refresh everyone in May that it's not just medical and dental, that we have other opportunities to, um, enroll in different benefits. And then, um, we're looking at launching the second part of NeoGov, which is onboard. And that's a new, um, system for us. We've never had onboard in a way where, um, a new hire transitions from the applicant tracking to onboard, which then feeds right into our payroll system. Um, so we are, uh, that, uh, we'll be working with that probably throughout the remainder of next year, um, as we get used to utilizing onboard, um, within that system, so. Some of the, um, highlights from training and professional development, so all employees were able to attend things like breaking free from burnout, nature therapy walk sessions, which were held by Connie Saboda of Conservation. And we had various wellness seminars for our employee family and resources vendor. Uh, managers also had the opportunity to attend the breaking free from burnout from a manager's perspective as to how they can help support their teams. They also, uh, completed a manager workshop partnering with CFU and we brought in attorney Douglas Duckett, who is, uh, well-known in the arena of labor relations, employment law. And, uh, we spent an entire day talking about, you know, how to manage employees, um, how to handle difficult situations, what to do with free, freedom of expression, and even conducting internal investigations. So, that was really well attended by our management team and hope to continue to offer those types of, um, partnerships with different entities in the area, um, because everybody has managers and employees, as we all know. We just completed our annual supervisor drug and alcohol training, that is a requirement that we do every year, um, so that was just completed and that was very well attended as well. Uh, personally, uh, for Human Resources, I want to highlight that Anna Knapp received her SHRM certified professional certificate. This is a huge accomplishment and means that our staff have all now completed this certification and we are all SHRM certified. Cherry has continued to work towards her CDES, this is a benefit, um, specialization certification and she's continuing to work towards that and pass those exams. I attended the In Palarat Annual Training Conference in Savannah this year and then we all continue to attend the High Powerwell Local Conferences to connect with HR directors from cities and counties and schools, um, anyone from the public sector that's in that , uh, network. Another thing I'd like to highlight is the Unite Committee and, uh, you will be seeing this committee come back next week. We have a meeting tomorrow, um, to kind of finalize our charter as well as prepare to come to the board to, um, share the, the meaning behind the name and how we establish the charter and how we see this committee, you know, moving forward. If you recall, we established this committee back in May. We have about 30 members from different, um, departments ranging from leadership roles to mid, you know, supervisory lo- level, professional and entry level. It's been a really great committee to be a part of and very proud of the committee, um, for the things that we've been able to sit down and work together to figure out how we want to integrate, uh, diversity, equity, inclusion into Black Hawk County and continue to highlight the work that we've already done. Uh, since May, we've, uh, been able to put forth two proclamations. We've had four large committee meetings. We've established a smaller subcommittee to develop a charter, which will be presented to the board next week. And we've had the opportunity, this picture here is the participants that went to the Opportunity Summit, I believe the end of October. That was on diversity business and inclusion and that was, um, held by Grove Cedar Valley. And then we've also had an opportunity to connect with the Cedar Valley LGBTQ Coalition and different networking events and we're continuing to, um, educate and, uh, kind of lay that foundation for new members and understanding, you know, what this means for employees, what this means for the public and how we continue to support the efforts that reflect our community, so. Okay, some data. So, uh, this year we had 67 new hires, we had 70 separations, which, uh, resulted in about 18% turnover. Uh, last year that was a little flip-flop, we had 70 new hires and about 66 separations and that was a 17% turnover. That does include seasonal staff, which ranges from about, and interns, which could be anywhere from 10 to upwards of 15 at the most. Um, but, uh, that just kind of gives you, snap to that, we're fairly consistent. And just to look at historically where we've gone with new hires and separations, so from 2018, this shows in the blue, those are the new hires and the, where we kind of rank and the gray shows the separations that we had. You can see 2022 was the highest number of separations we've seen, um, in a long time. I think we had about 86, um, individual or employees leave our organization. Uh, 2020 was a high year for hiring, a lot of that was driven by contract tracers, um, in public health, we had some unique roles and, or different roles in there that upped our hiring a little bit more than what you see in the terminations. But as you can see, um, you know, we're getting back closer to where we were in 2018 and I was trying to think back to that time when we had more like 50 new hires, 60, um, separations and it, uh, felt, you know, fairly manageable. The last few years have been a challenge, um, with the turnover, but I think we're heading in the right direction and I, I firmly believe, um, our compensation classification study has helped, uh, curb some of that retention. There are other factors, of course, economy, layoffs in different areas, different industries that may have, uh, you know, kept some people from, uh, leaving the government, um, industry that we represent, but, uh, I do, you know, feel that we're heading in a good direction here with our retention and I'd like to see our retention and turnover get below 15%. Um, that would be kind of like a, a target, but. Any questions on this? So where we're going in 2025, just some focus areas, the strategic planning has been, uh, picked up and we're, um, really gearing up to kind of figure out how we'll, uh, support, uh, the board and, uh, their strategic planning initiative. Uh, one of the things that we mentioned in our goals is really looking at our performance management system and starting to kind of, uh, look at this differently from the evaluation tool to, you know, how can it determine, is this the best system that we have right now or how do we, um, improve this? I would say right now it is fairly inconsistent. Um, we have some departments that are, uh, and it's also one, I think with strategic planning, we want to kind of align whatever those values, um, or the vision and the mission that we kind of want to address this again with our performance management system because it's based off of what we currently have from the 2028 vision. So I'm hoping those two things will kind of go hand in hand. And then that, you know, through strategic planning, leaders, employees can really see themselves in the work of the strategic planning, which then will transition down to performance management. Employee development and retention was talked about as one of our goals, um, just as that we, uh, hope to reduce our turnover, that we are being very proactive about what we do, what we need to do to keep employees from, um, or continuing to develop here and grow here with us. New manager training program, so, um, Cherry's been working on this. We will have an opportunity with a lot of the turnover in the sheriff's office to roll out. Uh, we have almost an entirely new command staff, um, so we do have a one-day new manager training that, uh, we hope to continue that for, um, any departments that have new managers or even existing managers, kind of refresh on what important things they need to know as they, uh, progress in their new management role. And then the, um, EEO and affirmative action plan update, so that is something I'd like to roll out with the Unite Committee to have others involved in that plan update this year. Um, it's something we haven't done before, it's primarily been held within Human Resources, but I think having a broader, um, perspective and understanding as to what that plan entails and, um, it goes beyond just hiring and promoting, it's really kind of in line with the Unite Committee and what it stands for and I, um, look forward to bringing that data to that committee and, um, getting their thoughts on, um, what actions we should be taking when it comes to our county EEO and AA plan, so. That's our year, so, and what we're looking for. Thank you for the opportunity to continue, um, to be in the Human Resources role. I really appreciate, um, you know, the board and working for the county and all the department heads and the like of officials, it's such a unique role. Um, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and kind of tell you all what we've been doing, but if you ever have any questions, concerns, um, we are in the basement, we are readily available and, um, yeah, just appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve in this, um, department, so, thank you.
I appreciate your leadership, Eric. You've done to really modernize the HR department. It's, um, to the benefit of the entire county and it's really appreciated.
Thank you very much. Alright.
Hi, the next presentation will be from, uh, county engineer Catherine Nicholas on the Roads Department.
Good morning, board, Nina Nicholas Engineer. Uh, it's our mission in the Roads Department to take care of the infrastructure, the roads and bridges and Black Hawk County's jurisdiction. We do that by being effective and efficient and, uh, while being physically responsible and environmentally sensitive. To this morning, I'm just going to give you a very brief overview of our, of highlights for you. I'm not going to talk about any, uh, numbers, any money numbers. We do spend a lot of money, but I feel like we're going to be talking a lot about that in January and February, so I'm just going to focus on some highlights. So we started the year out with a very mild winter, except for our two weeks of winter and that was in mid-January and that hit us really hard. We had quite a bit of drifting and snow come down in those two weeks, I think like 20 or 24 inches. We had to get the loaders out in a few places, which is, that doesn't happen every year. Uh, then we moved into a spring with some wet weather, a lot of rain and some flooding, so we spent some time cleaning up, uh, rock that had washed into the ditches, for example, uh, taking down barricades, putting up barricades, routine activities during flooding. Uh, you can see just a few other activities of, um, we were able to place 20 miles of rock in each of our, uh, gravel road districts, our nine districts that we have out in the county. They got, uh, 20 miles of rock and that's a very arduous year for us to place in that rock, re-rocking as we call it. And then our ridge crew was able to replace a small structure on Big Woods Road. We removed that, um, structure early in the fall and were able to get it replaced in about, um, five to six weeks. And then, of course, we did all kinds of other routine activities such as mowing and spraying and keeping motors safe with our routine activities. Uh, moving on to contract maintenance work, we did more, uh, payment markings that we routinely do those. We've gotten ourselves onto a schedule where some roads get, uh, restrike every year, some every other year and some every third year, so we are now into a very routine rhythm with that work. Um, we, of course, paints, paint staff bars every year. Uh, we did not have to re-grind any rumble strips this year. And then, of course, we did some steel coating. We are typically doing between three and six miles of steel coating every year. Uh, moving on to our actual road construction contracts, uh, done by our contractors, local contractors. I've already given you very, um, highlights of this project, uh, Dunkerton Road, we resurfaced that with, uh, that was resurfacing two miles from, uh, Wagner Road over to Highway 63. And then we, uh, removed some concrete at the Canfield Road overpass on 380. And I've given you quite a bit more information about that earlier when we, um, accepted those two projects. Our bridge construction this year was on Cedar Locksey Road. Uh, we started out by, it was just a redecking of that row, of that bridge, so we removed the concrete and then we were left with these, uh, bare beams. A new deck was placed on top of the bridge and then repainting of all these beams took place to ensure a longer life of the steel beams. That project, we're still processing the paperwork. There's quite a bit of, um, paperwork involved in our bridge projects certifying, uh, all of our materials, that type of thing. We're still waiting on bringing that to you for final acceptance after we have all of our paperwork. Uh, other activities we did this year was, of course, working with other county departments. We routinely work with, uh, many different departments, these three in particular every year. Uh, usually with Conservation, we are helping them, assisting them, often with some engineering type questions on trails or resurfacings. We are happy to assist them in any of those type of technical questions. We do share a GIS position with them and that's at a 60/40 split in that. We do share a GIS position with them, and that's at a sixty forty split, and that continues to work really well. That position makes quite a few maps for us and for conservation. We work with the sheriff's office routinely on any type of accident. We always want to be involved if there's, if there's something we can be doing better out on the roadway, making it safer. We routinely go out and look at accidents where there, accident sites where there are big fatalities, for example. And then lastly, building maintenance, we worked with them on putting together a plan set for the resurfacing of the county employee parking lot and then doing some main, some work out here in the main parking lot. We will continue to work with them as needed. I just, we routinely work with other smaller agencies, local agencies in Black Hawk County, Raymond and Gilbertville. In particular, we've been working with them, trying to get our plan set together for a resurfacing project on Raymond Road that will take place in two thousand and twenty-six. We have split jurisdictions with both of those agencies at both ends of that project, so we're working with them so we can get the road resurfaced. And then Iowa Trap Shoot Association, we had a nice partnership with them in the last few years. When they are hosting their Iowa, the state high school trap shoot meet, we've had good conversations with them, and that did lead to us implementing a four-way stop on a temporary basis and then later converting that to a permanent four-way stop on Waverly Road and Cedar Wapsie Road earlier this fall. Just a few statistics here, this is on roadway safety. We did have several fatalities this fall in Black Hawk County, and I just wanted to show you how that compares with other years. The fatalities is over here on the right side of the screen, and you can see that since two thousand and twenty-one, we were trending down with only one fatality over two thousand and twenty-two and twenty-three. But then, to date, in two thousand and twenty-four, we've had four fatalities, so it's not a large number by any means, but, you know, it was an increase, an unfortunate increase. So we're working with the Iowa LTAP Center to see if we can improve all of our intersections. This winter, we'll be looking at some of our, all of our intersections and coming up with some proposals if that's needed to improve the safety. And then this is just the total crashes throughout Black Hawk County. And this takes into account minor and major accidents, property damage only, takes into account all types of accidents. You can see we've had a slight downtick in the last year. Just moving on real briefly, our roadside management program. I know our roadside manager is talking, talked to you at length about his accomplishments over the year. So this is just some of the highlights. He was able to get eight hundred and seventy miles of the gravel road system sprayed with herbicides as needed to eradicate some of the weeds on the Iowa Naxus weed list. He acquired a new spray truck and a spray logger system. Just highlighting some of the purchases we made with our FY twenty-five money, new mortar grater, dump truck, hydro cedar, some equipment for our main shop. And then also, we're able to hire a new shop foreman. I believe you met Zach at one of the earlier board meetings in September, I believe. He's implemented some new daily safety inspections for our drivers, our truck drivers, our mortar grater drivers. And he's ultimately working with our staff to become more effective and efficient out in, at our Longfellow Army facility as well as the other outshops. And I just want to say that for, in the future, in two thousand and twenty-five, we will be working on, working on getting a new, we would like to build a new Longfellow, a new maintenance facility, so we will definitely be talking more about that in our budget session coming up in January. Can I answer any questions at this point?
That's a great recap.
No questions. We're proud to have you as our county engineer. Amazing, excellent work as always.
Thank you so much.
Next up will be facilities, our facilities director, Lloyd Givaud.
Roy Givaud, facilities director. This is our two thousand and twenty-four accomplishments review for this facilities department. What I wanted to show here is our global dashboard. This is what we use in our maintenance software program. This is the different segments that we're responsible for, different entities. Although we are missing two, which will fill this page, we'll add the Sycamore Shop and the future VA Center on here. But just wanted to kind of showcase, you know, what, what our global dashboard looks like with regards to our maintenance work order system. We do have a new staff. We have an administrative assistant, Connie, who is a great addition to our department. We also have a new position, operations manager, which is Carol, also a much-needed position. So I just wanted to showcase that. Maintenance work orders year-to-date, we have two thousand seven hundred and fifty-two work orders that have been completed throughout all of our facilities. Even though I'd like to see these two numbers here flip-flopped, planned versus unplanned, we do have some planned, but I do want to also point out, we, we've put in things like light bulb changeouts that will go under unplanned. So that does kind of skew that percentage just a little bit, but ultimately, our goal is to be more preventative and less reactive. But just wanted to kind of show just the sheer number of work orders that our team takes care of. We have a great staff, and they take great pride in what they do. And as I go through, I'll kind of showcase some of those items. Inmate fall protection over at the jail, we did this project in-house. We installed metal grating on the upper mezzanine portion, which is a nice addition to, to that facility. We've worked on some exterior lighting. Over at JCS, we've installed new exterior lighting. We also have lighting for here at the courthouse. It is on-site, it has not been installed yet, but that is in the, in the works. We've installed new roof access over at Pine Crest Facility. And I just got to say a special thank you to our safety coordinator, Brad. He was very instrumental in working with our vendors on getting this constructed and installed, so thank you for that. Some additional projects, we did a new fire alarm panel here at the courthouse. The old panel had outlived its useful life, so that's a nice addition to this facility. We did a pretty extensive cooling tower repair over in our Pine Crest Facility. This is just a template picture, it's not the actual cooling tower, but it looks similar to that. And I know that's just a door, and that's not too exciting, but I know Amanda had been waiting for that for quite some time, so I wanted to get that out there. So yes, they do have an emergency exit now. Again, we did that in-house, so thank you to the staff. Softener salt delivery, this one here is, if you recall, this is a very nice project. We were able to eliminate the handling of approximately two hundred and fifty bags a month, which not only was that a significant positive for our staff and just movement around the facility, wear and tear, but that's also two hundred and fifty bags a month that's not going to landfill, so pretty huge. It's just an example there on the, on the right are the storage tanks. So it's, it's jetted in from the outside, so we have a vendor that comes in and hooks up to a connection on the outside of the building and jets that softener salt right into the tanks. So that was a very nice project. Parking lot resurfacing, big shout-out to Kathy and her crew. They were great to work with on this. First picture on the left, that is our employee parking lot, which got a total resurfacing. Picture on the right, it's kind of hard to see, but that's the main parking lot here at the courthouse. That just identifies all the different areas that got touched, repaired, what have you. Again, engineering department worked with them, they did a great job, even working with the vendors on this, so thank you for that. We also did some curb replacement over at the upper lot over at the Pine Crest Facility as well, and that was much-needed, so. Collaboration, we worked with City of Waterloo. This is the approach to the upper deck over at the Pine Crest Facility. A big thank you to the city. We reached out to them, and they said, hey, I think we have just the product. And they came over and demonstrated this piece of equipment, basically filled in the potholes on the approach over there. It's an oil-based rock mixture, but that was a very successful partnership. Although we've been more so on the receiving end of that, but hopefully we can maybe pay them back at some point. Courthouse remodel projects, as you know, the auditors department, this just kind of shows some construction progress throughout that project. They are moved in. We're almost complete in the auditors. I know we've got a new countertop, we're still waiting for some additional items in the plat room, but for the most part, everybody's moved in, and I think it's working out very nicely. We're hoping by the end of the year that we'll be getting the, actually elections, sorry. The auditors will be moving down to their new location on the opposite side. And then we get to start on moving the treasures out temporarily to the basement, which is no small accomplishment and with the work of IT. I think we have a good plan in place, and after the first of the year, we'll get them moved down there to their temporary home while we construct their area. So looking forward to that. This isn't really an accomplishment, but I wanted to show this. This was a overflow water leak up on the fifth floor at the Pine Crest Facility. The reason I wanted to share this is our, our, our staff did a great job. This is after-hours weekends, coming in, getting this cleaned up. This is just one example of what an after-hours or on-call situation might look like. This is a bit extreme, but they did a great job cleaning this up and back to business next Monday, so that was all done in-house as well. Phone service, that has been quite a challenge. Anybody that's worked at phone companies or phones in general can appreciate this, but just wanted to say a special thank you to Carol because I know it was a very frustrating process. Each stage required careful planning, communication, support, working with IT as well. Thank you to Al and his team. We finally got to the point where we have a contract signed, so hopefully within sixty to ninety days, you'll see a new phone system. So we are very excited about that. Safety, Brad gave me a list of his safety improvement and training accomplishments, and I, I had to cut it back a little bit, so he's been very busy. Just wanted to outline some of these. Such a, such a benefit for Black Hawk County, having that position. So you can see here, it affects or impacts just about every department, so that's pretty neat to see. So a special thank you to Brad. He's worked very hard, as always, in getting these trainings out and working and collaborating with other departments, just a continuation of that list, so. Quite a bit there. Now, I know this isn't technically a completed accomplishment, but there's been quite a bit of work to get to this point. As you know, last week, we had the final approval to go ahead with the VA in the Pine Crest Facility, so this is an example of what hopefully we'll see here very soon. Another one, this will be the first floor. I know it's just a bunch of colors, but every, just about every aspect of that first floor is going to get touched or affected by this project. This is going to be our second floor. We're going to be actually moving the health department from their current fifth floor and fourth floor, and they'll be occupying all of the first floor and half the second floor. Just wanted to identify the clinic. This is a, a outline of what that will look like. This is the existing VA department, so that'll be a very nice project once we're complete. That is our year in review, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's exciting to see that safety position really, really putting out to the benefit of the county. This has been a year of getting a lot of big projects ready, so you've done a good job of getting us across the finish line.
Thank you very much.
Not that you needed another assignment, but I'm glad everybody's done this. But I'm going to say it's great to see what's all been accomplished over the year.
Yep, thank you.
The next presentation will be from marketing, from Gabby DeWitt, our marketing director.
Do it, Al.
Yep.
Okay. Good morning. I'm the technical one there. Okay, I guess I'm wearing a shirt. Hi, Gabby DeWitt, marketing coordinator in Black Hawk County. My first interview presentation, and I haven't quite finished my first year, so this time last year, I was listening to board supervisors' meetings and listening to you all planning what the marketing coordinator would do. So I'm, I'm very happy to be here, happy for the support of the board, the department heads and the staff. I've been impressed listening to everybody else's presentations, and collaboration across our departments is really amazing, and I've gotten to witness that firsthand, so. Some of my highlights include getting acquainted. It's kind of a unique thing to be a twenty-three-year employee and also be the new kid on the block. So when I came in in January, I recognized Rhonda and recorders because we went to high school together, I didn't know anybody else. And so that's just so, it's different, but it's been really interesting. There's so much the county does that I didn't know about, and hopefully the county now won't know as more about it because I've been kind of learning and putting it on social media. We also had a new brand, as you all know, and then beginning tackling social media management. We have a lot of social media accounts in the county, and then also some really great special projects this year. So some ways, I just wanted to put up some pictures of ways that I've gotten to know Black Hawk County. I think one of the first things that I did out in the field was going out with the veteran staff to deliver Valentines to veterans, and you can just see how much the veterans really appreciate them and really being taken care of. And then conservation, every time you turn around, conservation has a special project that they're doing. And so I got to tag along with Maple Syrup Festival and see how they just all work together and, and pull off these huge events one right after another. And Kathy talked about Griffin and his sprayer. I got to go along while he was spraying. I didn't climb on top because I didn't think Brad would like that, but, but it was really cool. I, you know, you just don't really put much thought into how our, our county ditches get the way they are and, and road management. So the roadside vegetation management program is, is a very cool thing. And then elections, there's so much more that goes into elections than I realized, and this is a picture of them testing the machines before the primary. Before I even started, and one of the things that really piqued my interest in this position was the fact that we were going to be doing a rebrand for Black Hawk County. I was excited about it. I knew that if I didn't apply for the position, I'd have like side conversations in my head about how it should go, so I was really excited to get to be a part of it. The brand was finalized by a committee that was representative of all the departments that were being touched by the rebrand, and so that's really great because it was a committee effort and committee decision approved by you all in March and then launched in April. And this picture of the T-shirts that we were able to give out to staff as part of the rollout. Along with the rollout, we did outreach materials such as banners, pop-up displays, tablecloths, swag, T-shirt, like I mentioned, T-shirts, the notebooks, pens, lanyards for staff to wear, and then templates, like letterheads, and the PowerPoints. I'm really loving the PowerPoints today, the PowerPoints, email signatures, just ways that, little ways that we can continue to reinforce our brand identity. Signage, I really like the picture of Signage, I really like the picture of the Vital Records. Brand rollout is a marathon, not a sprint. And so, you'll be walking around, actually it just happened today. I was looking, counting YouTube channels and found out that the old conservation logo's on the, their YouTube channel. And so, there's, that's, that will still happen probably for a year or so. But just switching up signage so it adheres to our brand. And then I wanted to give a shout out to Zach and the Rhodes team for helping us get the logos on our, our new vehicles. And we just got the facilities, vehicle decals. Waterloo Sign Department was, was so helpful in all of that. And so, we'll, hopefully, facilities will be also branded soon. And just a couple more pictures, the conservation team and their T-shirts. We did a reel of Proud to Be BHC and this is just one of the pictures from that. Lamar Advertising donated a billboard for us when we launched our brand. And then, that's a nice picture of Grant, but he's standing in front of my, the backdrop that I like so much. And then also, sorry, Grant, also for part of the brand rollout, we did social media staff spotlight. I was hoping for enough to get through April because April was when we launched. We had sixty-six people respond and fifty-nine actually follow through on a staff spotlight. So, we ended up stretching it through August. And it was a really great way for people to learn more about the staff that work at Black Hawk County, put faces to names. But also I got a lot of internal feedback, like, wow, I didn't know Heather from the attorney's office that did seventeen reg rise. Or I didn't know Steve from the attorney's office was in the Hawkeye marching band. So, it was really cool to have people even learn more about each other. But also it got really good external feedback as well. I picked these two because Grants, of course, got the highest interactions, one hundred and eighty-four on the post. Most of them got around forty to fifty. And then Emmy, and this is cheating because I did tag the sheriff's office, Emmy's was the highest reach, over seventy-six hundred. And then social media, I think when people, when people hear about my job, they think all I do is, is social media. And it's, it is a big part of the job, but there's been so much else going on that there's still so much more to do. But just as a recap, we have ten Facebook pages in the county. There was eleven, but we did roll the treasures department into that. It had a very small following and it just seemed it was good to, to get that together. Instagram, there's four Instagram pages in the county that I know of. Hartman Reserve Conservation, Public Health, and K-9 Mary has her own page. Five Twitter accounts. It took me six months to hack into the Black Hawk County Twitter page, so we're just now getting going. But that's good. And then, as I mentioned, YouTube, we have three YouTube stations. Public Health has one and then Black Hawk County and Conservation. And then LinkedIn is, has its own account. And we've really been trying to do more with LinkedIn as far as doing some of the staff service awards. And then also when we're hiring and then board and commissioner openings, trying to increase some of that engagement. I would like to see us start doing more blog posts, like from experts in the field. And so, that's kind of one of the highlights that I would like to do for twenty twenty-five. I had so many slides about social media, but to spare everyone, these are some of the highlights. And followers, Hartman Reserve has the greatest number of followers of all of our social media pages. And I should say, these numbers do not account for Public Health and Sheriff because I don't have admin rights. But, so these are the ones that I have the admin rights to. But, but still, Hartman Reserve has over seventy-seven hundred followers. And, but Black Hawk County Facebook had the greatest growth at eighty-eight percent this year. And our current followers are only thirty-five hundred, but we're hoping to keep seeing that go. Reach, I was telling Mike, this floored me. Hickory Hills Facebook page has one point three million reached this year. And I believe it's because of this contractor that was working on Casey Lake. He was doing these really engaging reels and then also tourism did some reels. And just the slide, if you put up the reach of Hickory Hills, it looked like nobody else was doing anything. So, it was really amazing. Of that reach, they have fifty-six hundred followers. So, that's all people who are learning about Hickory Hills for the first time. So, that's really exciting. And then the interactions versus reach, I think this is important because a lot of us, we'll scroll through our feed and it's gotten to the point, you don't really even, you're not really even digesting it. You're not clicking on it or doing anything. But three pages in our group, Hickory Hills, McFarland Park, who only has nine hundred followers, and Veterans, who has close to, I think like seventeen hundred. They all had greater than twenty percent interactions compared to their reach. So, that means that people are really enjoying and interacting with the things that they put on their page. So, you don't necessarily have to have the highest reach or the highest followers if people are really enjoying the, the information that you're putting out. But also in the page visits, Rhodes and Elections had ten times the page visits than they have followers. So, that also means, I'm one of those people. I don't necessarily want to follow every page I'm interested in, but if there's election coming up, if there's a road closure, I might go and visit that page just to see what they're saying about it. And so, both Rhodes and Elections had more than ten times the amount of page visits than they have followers. So, nerdy, but I thought it was interesting. This is just a snapshot of our website. I don't really have anything to compare it to, but I did think it was interesting that in twenty twenty-four, of the hundred and seventy-one thousand total users, a hundred and sixty-two thousand of them were new users. So, keeping them coming back would be very good. And hopefully we're putting out information that they're interested in. It's pretty fifty-fifty on whether people use desktop or mobile. And most people search for us to find our information, but some do type it in directly. Organic search doesn't look very great, like, or organic source, social media as a traffic source. That number doesn't look that great, but it's still almost two thousand, it's just a big number. And those are the top pages that people are visiting, the stuff they need. Some efficiencies added this year, Canva. Canva is the non-designer's tool to design. And we were able with the board's support to get a professional account for Black Hawk County. Public Health is, is fortunate that they get a free account because they're public health. But now we have a professional account for other departments so that we can enhance our brand adherence and also collaborate better over, over posts. Loonly is a scheduling, streamlined scheduling. That's another thing that was in this fiscal year's budget that I was really hoping for. And we really got to see that in action for the general election. We were able to put all of the posts, all of the races that we knew we wanted to post on election night in, to draft more of it, and then we could just put in the numbers. And it was, really streamlined our, our posting about the election. And then time tracking software, this is just for me, but I do find it interesting. It's free. And for those of us who support multiple departments, it's kind of interesting then at the end of the month to see how you've spent your time and which departments you've spent more time with. And so, if I were ever to get an intern or need to show like how I'm spending my time, I find it very interesting. And then we, I've just been added as an administrator to the Google Analytics. So, hopefully next year, we'll have even more information about website numbers. Some of the projects, there's been a lot of projects this year, which is why face, social media doesn't always get the attention it needs. The CGI video project, that's seven videos that are highlighting Black Hawk County. Approved in March, scripts were approved in June, we did local shooting in July. We, because they were only here for two days and there's so much that goes on in our county all the time, we were able to secure videos and images from thirty-four resources. Some of our biggest collaborators were City of Cedar Falls, Grow Cedar Valley, Experience Waterloo, the downtown districts, Waterloo and Cedar Falls, City of Waterloo, and then a lot of organizations that helped share some images so that it didn't look like we only shot in July. The revisions began in October, we're final. And so, I'm hoping next week, I'll be giving you an update of them on our website. So, it's very exciting and hopefully everyone feels like it's a good representation of Black Hawk County. The online store, Amanda was just asking me about this. But apparently Muscatine has had a whole lot of illness. And so, they, that has impacted the Phelps store that, that Rhodes Department works with, that we're working with on this. The nice thing about the Phelps store is that you, there's no quantity limits. We can leave this open and if you want a T-shirt and order a T-shirt, you'll get your T-shirt in two weeks. We don't have to have forty or fifty before we can do it. We have department stores set up for every department, so that's what's been taking so long. So, there's an election store, there's a board office store, there's an IT store. And they can go and they can choose whether they want the primary logo on their shirt or if it's going to say information technology underneath it. There's embroidery options, there's going to be heat transfer instead of screen printing. There's a wide variety. In fact, hindsight being twenty twenty, maybe I wouldn't do such a wide variety and maybe the store would have been open last month. But there is a wide variety and then we can go in and change inventory seasonally. And staff should receive an invitation to join the store this week, so. And then just some other projects, again, I keep saying we and that, and I'm a department of one, but we is, is the departments that I've been working with and, and really learning a lot from. I had no idea everything that goes into elections from start to finish and we got to do two this year. And so, we've seen, let's see here, I lost my page. We've seen over two hundred and twenty percent growth in the elections page interactions. And the elections workers have been really cool about being featured and, and really game about it all. And so, that's been a lot of fun and just getting out to the different precincts for voting. Conservation, like I said, this is a picture of the Cedar Valley Nature Trail ribbon cutting with Mike talking to a reporter. But whole, they've, and Mike's going to talk about Casey Lake, the timber stand improvement. It's just been really busy and it's fun to find out things that I didn't even know, you know, were, were happening or that we did as a county. And then Rhodes, Kathy mentioned the weather in January, my first week, there was a blizzard. And so, we started, we got together a spreadsheet of all of the transportation and superintendents in the districts that have county roads. And now we can contact them with things that we need them to know quickly. And, and then also the snowplow contest, we have twelve hundred votes so far on our naming our snowplows. We're going to be naming three snowplows and we'll be presenting that to you next week. And then just the plan for twenty twenty-five, just looking forward to continuing to build relationships with departments. It's easy to kind of get in your office and, and just get working and not get a chance to meet with, with other departments, but that's something that I want to continue to do. I've applied for the TCU Public Communicator Certificate. And one, an outcome of that is a crisis and communications plan. So, I'm hoping to have that done in this next year. And then continuing to increase our engagement online and in person with the people who visit and live in Black Hawk County. And that's it. And that was short written, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you so much, Gabby. You've done an excellent job understanding this role. And it's been amazing to see the little output of the brand.
Well, thank you.
And I'm excited for the stories going online this week. Everybody's getting Black Hawk County.
Yep. Very good, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I've told Gabby a number of times personally, but I just want to say publicly how excited and thrilled I've been to be working with her in raising the profile of elections, improving transparency, educating the people, the public about elections. And I, you know, there's, there's obviously a lot more that can be done, a lot more people that can be reached. But, you know, the, some of the statistics she quoted shows the, the greater reach that we're having with, to the public for elections because of her efforts and I'm very appreciative.
Thanks. And that's not just because I put your picture on two of the slides.
I was looking for more, but two, okay.
Thank you for that, Grant. And next we will have a presentation from IT Director, Al U, on Information Technology Department.
Good morning, Board, Al U, IT Director. So, as a department, we, we support all the other departments who then in turn support our citizens. We are very passionate about what we do and we love collaborating with all the other departments. So, that will sort of be a theme of a lot of highlights that we, that we present here, so. Starting off with Waterloo Schools. So, those that know me know that I, I really love supporting the next generation. And working with students is, is always a pleasure for us to do. So, when the Waterloo Schools asked us to open our doors to, to provide a job shadow experience, we definitely jumped on it. This is actually our second year of doing it. So, we had students from both East and West High come. We only have a small space, so we occupied our conference room. But we gave them some few, a few hands-on experiences, activities. So, one was installing a hard drive. We even made the chaperone do it too, so that was, that's actually kind of fun. And then I think Cory led a course on how to make your own network cable. And then we let them keep their own network cable. So, a lot of kids are gamers and they thought it was really neat. And now they can take that, that cable home and use it and connect it to their video game systems and, and game faster, so. And as you may notice in this picture here, there's a bowl of candy. So, I, I gave them sugar, they didn't complain. And so, I sugared them up and sent them back to their teachers. And, you know, they may not appreciated that, but you know, I, I think it helped with the whole experience. So, overall, I, I will, I will always do this. I think it was a great activity for, for students and our staff. My personal philosophy is that when you, when you teach someone something, it reinforces everything that you know. And it was great to have an opportunity for our own staff to teach students what they know. And so, it was good, good interaction, good rapport, so. Definitely do that again. So, next slide, Staffing Cave Personnel. Oh, oh yeah, that's a, that's Clint Harden, that's his alter ego. But when he, when he comes to work, that's, that's what he looks like, so. He actually wanted me to do that, so I, I definitely, I got permission, okay? So. That was Zoolander for those of you that haven't. So, this year, we brought on a new position. So, we created a new role called the System Administrator. For those that don't know what that role does, it's a, it's a role that focuses on server infrastructure, backups. So, Jason, I mean, we, we all do everything in our, in our department. But the focus is making sure the servers are updated, secure, and backups are, are ran. So, Jason started back in early May and he has been a great addition to our growing team. And Clint, no stranger to the county, he's been with us the longest. He has the longest tenure in our young department. And last July, he was promoted to Assistant IT Director and that has been a great transition. All right, so this one is not an achievement, but I, I have to highlight it because it was, for a lot of IT professionals, it was literally the worst day of their lives. So, you, some of you may remember when CrowdStrike, I mean, it, it was national news. So, CrowdStrike, if you're not familiar with it, it is an endpoint detection response. Think of that as like a powerful antivirus. A lot of customers worldwide, they sent out an update that broke all Windows computers. And it was a, it was the most awesome thing to happen on a Friday. And on that very day, we were very short-staffed and, and, you know, we, we were panicking. Well, yeah, we were panicking, I'll, I'll be honest with you. We panicked, but I have to give credit to our team. We, we stayed poised and focused and we, we got through it. We had to touch every single computer in the entire county. And some of, sheriff staff recorded it right away because they're three, they're twenty-four-seven operation. And so, as soon as we got into work, we went right, right to, went to town and started fixing all the issues. So, in hindsight, there, there was nothing that we could have done to prevent this. This was completely out of our control. This was a, a failure on the CrowdStrike part to not test their update before pushing it out. And it created a nightmare for everyone. So, as I jokingly put, it was the best day ever, it was not, but we survived. And honestly, it was, in some ways, it was a good experience because it, it did strengthen us. It made us work as a team. We divided and conquered. I'm very proud of how we handled the situation. And we communicated frequently with, with the, when we had time in between going site to site to email all staff about the progress of it. So, but I just wanted to commend our, our staff on that because we, I thought we did pretty well and, and got it fixed within one day. So, some, some companies were down throughout the weekend. So, it was, it was crippling for some. All right, and elections. So, this year, we, we supported elections quite a bit. And, and, and I have to commend Grant and Karen and their staff because they, they do an amazing job. I think it kind of goes under the radar and, and I've got to experience firsthand working with them and, and actually getting more involved with the election process to, to see what goes on, so. Early on, when they were doing the construction, so we moved Elections Office over to, was the former auditors department. And so, we got them going, got all the computers set up. And then we prepared the basement for it. And then we prepared the basement for in uh early in-person voting, um and and that was very helpful. I haven't personally seen the elections before, but I hear it wrapped all the way down the hallway, out the door. And not a great experience for for citizens to vote while they're freezing outside trying to get in. So so downstairs in the basement, it was a much better setup for them. It was a little crowded in the lobby area, but at least they were, you know, in the room, out of the elements. And I think for the most part, the experience was generally positive, uh I think citizens appreciated that, so. Leading up to elections, spent a lot of time working with elections, uh preparing and testing hotspots for all the all the voting precincts. Making sure they have uh best the best connectivity. Had a small hiccup on the day of, uh where the servers couldn't handle the sheer amount of registered voters coming in. That was out of our control, but we did work with their support, precinct Atlas is the company that we worked with uh to do the e poll book. And uh within a few hours, they got it back up up to speed, but it was a little slow up at the beginning, so. But yeah, uh hu- like I said, huge appreciation for what they do. Went on to a few precincts myself, just kinda troubleshoot some issues. Great to see people, it's great to see volunteers positively supporting this process and making sure it was overall smooth, I felt it was a smooth process, so hats off to them for doing it. Sheriff's Office, uh so CGIS is a, it's it's known as Criminal Justice Information Systems, it is a division of the FBI. This year, and so they oversee all the, what we call CGI Criminal Justice Information that the sheriff's office and other law uh law agencies have to handle and and safeguard. So this year, they implemented a mandatory policy that required an additional layer of security. In order to pull this off, we purchased uh these small security devices, they're called Ubiquities, I have one on me right here. Uh there's a picture of it on there. And so we we deployed it to every sheriff office staff, anyone that could possibly come in contact with uh CGI. Definitely a big undertaking, uh and then also having to work through three shifts to to make appointments and 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 meet those employees to get that set up. But uh we got that set up and so now we have uh we are within compliance with uh CGIS, so. GIS, so uh Geographic Information Systems. So as an as an IT person, what makes us happy is when people who don't use IT embrace technologies. We just, we love it, it's it's our favorite thing, so. Uh in the picture, the big picture on the bottom, that is Kelly from from Public Health, may know who that is. And and what she is holding is a GPS, basically a GPS on a stick. And so one of her jobs is to work with contractors and inspect septic installs and and wells and things like that. So how it's how it's been documented now is just basically kind of hand-drawn maps, uh who want that. So with this device, um and using technology, that GPS is accurate down to a few centimeters. So where she is at, she's actually standing in what we call a leach field that goes comes off of the septic tank. That is mapping, and so that little picture right up here is mapping those precise lines to the septic tank. So now now when we pull up this map and we come back to the site, we know exactly where that leach field is, where that well is, where that septic tank is. It is incredibly accurate. And so she has started using this and 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 she has told us herself that she is not, she is not tech savvy. And and I'm super proud of her because she she took it and she ran with it and she is, she's she's actually having fun and 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 we we love seeing this, and so she's doing a great job. And and now, when she's not busy doing the inspection, she can go back to previous sites and map those. And now we're gonna have more accurate uh information for for people. Uh and this will be incredibly helpful in in the future, once we establish all the accurate data, so. Data requests, we get a lot of data requests from people asking for parcel information. Before it was just they email us and it and then we just have to put it on our 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 bulletin of things to do. So Natalie created a form for people to fill out now with all their requests. We also have a hub site that provides a lot of this information ahead of times, uh so that they can look at it, get the information there. And then if there's anything else they need, then they can fill out this form and and request uh additional information from us. And then collab- collaboration internally and externally, so Natalie worked with the Waterloo Public Library. They had a uh project that they wanted to know with students that are che- uh checking out books, where those students are checking out books from. And it's it's pretty awesome because it's all over, all over the county. And and so that is just getting started and and so we'll have more information about that one, but I thought that was a really neat project. We actually worked with Esri, Esri, if you don't know, they are the company, they're the Microsoft of geog- geography. They they write the program that everyone uses for G I S stuff. They let us pilot, they worked with us to pilot a new farms program that will be released at some point down down the year. I don't know if we're gonna get credit for it, but we're gonna say that we worked out help with that program, that is gonna be an official product. So that I thought that was a very neat and unique opportunity. And then I J I C and Hawkeye, I I J I C is the Iowa Geographic Information Council, uh all the GIS coordinators throughout the uh the state. And we got to work with them and and do some presentations. And so uh and at Hawkeye, we got to present to students with some of the things that the county does. And it was really nice interacting with those students as well. And just a little more on GIS, um so our official data hub site has received over sixty-two thousand views. While that seems pale and pale in comparison to some, you know, high-traffic sites, that is a lot of visitors looking for data in the county. So it's not a lot of GIS people, so uh so we're very impressed by that. We also launched a drone program. One of the reasons why we went into launching the drone program was to have better data. And so this picture up in the upper right here, that is four hundred feet above Hartman Reserve. It's really cool, kinda scary, that's really tough to hide there. But one of the things that we want to do is as we, we're gonna map the trails of Hartman Reserve. So we're gonna fly the drone about hundred, two hundred feet low, it's gonna map all paths. And one of the goals, uh when the weather is nicer, is to have an interactive path. So for if there are citizens that have uh that that need help and 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 wanna take a path that has less terrain, less elevation, we could have an interactive app that will give them a path, once we have it all mapped, as to which which path to take. So that would be the easiest for them, uh most accessible. So I think that's a really cool program that we're gonna do. We're only in the beginning stages of it, but we still have to go through and map every trail in Hartman and it's it's kind of a big part. So but we'll we'll get there, uh we only got started i- in early, late November, so the weather hasn't always cooperated. You can't even fly a drone if it's if it's seen remotely windy, so. And Hartman, interesting fact, is considered an FAA no-fly zone. I guess it's sort of close to the bottom we are for, so we have to get permission every single time we fly over Hartman. So and then if the weather does cooperate, then we have to cancel, so. Parcel fabric, um that is another monstrous uh project that we that we performed. But it was uh it was good because it it created better data quality, easier sharing, faster processing. We're working with the City of Waterloo, working with City of Cedar Falls, they absolutely appreciate how the data is now configured. It is it is the new industry standard and and they they really appreciate it and they've been waiting. It it took a little longer than we expected, but yeah, it is now in place and they are starting to take that and run with it. And lastly, just in internal data, um we 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 kinda had saved data from uh for G I S stuff all over, placed on known servers. And now we have it all organized in a proper database, so that it's easier access. You guys can't tell the difference, but just had to say it because we we finally did that and it was the proper thing to do, so. So collaboration, um as some of the other departments highlighted, um this is kinda gonna be the focus here. We, in HR, we we helped them with the NeoGov applicant tracking system, uh I've got to use that once myself and I think it's a great system. Hopefully everyone thinks that too, but I I like it. Recorder, so uh they were using a system called COT for their records management system, it did the job. But I think uh they wanted to have a better experience for citizens, so I worked with our recorder Sandy. And we uh looked at other products and we uh we decided on Fiddler and I think it's been a phenomenal product. I think it's been a better experience for citizens, um I think their staff really enjoy using it and it's easier to use. So that that is a huge win for them. Conservation, um we helped them install new security cameras, I think it was long overdue. We helped them draft the RFP and scored select the final bidder. And I think that's a added layer of security and and peace of mind to to their site, so. And then uh Treasury, they they are working with an cumin system called No Weight Inside. I think that will offer a better experience for the citizens who are there to do business. Uh as you may have seen downstairs, lines can get really long, sometimes they're out in the hallway. Of course, with their new renovation, it's gonna address a lot of that, but this is also going to help in the meantime. They're currently beta testing it, uh I think we're gonna implement a lot of it uh once we we move their staff down temporarily downstairs. And that will help with some of the congestion. What's really nice about that system, um citizens can make appointments in advance, you know, it'll call their number, they're gonna print a label, old-school style. And other departments can use this program too, if they want to. Auditors, uh we work with payroll to to select and implement time and attendance, which is the new uh electronic timekeeping system. We replaced E-Suite, uh it it does offer, they're both owned by Tyler, but it it does offer a lot of flexibility. Supervisors can approve time off remotely, they don't have to VPN into, I know I know you guys have had to VPN just to approve timepiece. Now you don't have to do that, uh you can do that through a website or through an app on your phone. And then um facilities, we've worked with a lot of project facilities this year, um just helping them with the infrastructure. All the blueprints for for all the renovation projects, a lot goes into this this and hats off to to them because they've had a busy year. But it's uh it's moving along and they also um helped facilitate this this AV system that we have. And so this is a long time coming, but I'm very happy that we have this new system. And we just have a couple more things we need to tweak to it to make it an even better experience. And one thing I don't have on here was was collaboration with marketing, but um you know, thank you for including IT into the rebranding. Using your branding, so. And then on the horizon, um uh working on finalizing uh new body cams uh and evidence management systems for sheriff's office. Can't wait for the new phone system that was approved recently and and then uh our IT server renovation was approved, so that will be coming here soon. And that is all I have, any any questions?
Great presentation. I said I loved the recap, but there's even a few things in there I guess I'd forgotten or wasn't aware of, so that's fun as well.
There there was more, but I wasn't gonna make this slide too long, I I tried to keep it lower. So if you're curious, the Bison is kind of our unofficial mascot and and Gabby loves the Bison. And and it paves the way for conservation people, we all have an actual Bison, so.
So how did he get to be our mascot?
No, it's not our mascot.
It's IT's unofficial mascot, she won't let me put it on any of the official t-shirts, so.
Yours, IT is official.
Alright, can I answer any questions?
Please, it's not planned.
Thank you for an excellent year and everything your department does to uh really protect the county and keep us uh keep us rolling, it's really appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. These are the best meetings, I tell ya, this this should go on forever, I don't know how we ever did these before because they're the best meetings we've ever had and and the recap is just so helpful. I I wish the, I wish everyone in the public could get to see these and experience this because it's so much good information about the county.
Okay, Al's a tough act to follow, we can do. Mike Henderson, Director of Blackhawk County Conservation. A couple of things I'd like to talk about before I start through this slideshow and it'll be a pretty quick little slideshow, but very interesting. Obviously, we've had a lot going on this year, probably one of the busiest years uh in in all the years that I've been here. Those things happen uh only because we have support, uh support from you, support from our county conservation board and support from from people of Blackhawk County and Cedar Valley. Projects don't happen without funding, as we all know. ARPA was a huge part of what Conservation was able to accomplish and it's a huge part of this presentation. You'll see each project as I go through here, you'll see the ones that were funded by ARPA. And I'm happy to say that the majority of them are finished. And Michelle's smiling, I know that makes her happy, but uh but we really got a lot done. Outdoor recreation uh uh is is growing, it is growing in leaps and bounds. It's very important, our staff understands the fact that uh we need to continue to expand and to grow and to be on the cutting edge to to keep our programs and the things we have to do fresh and to continue to create uh outdoor recreational opportunities. They're gonna bring that that are going to make people wanna come to Blackhawk County, um that will make the residents happy to live in Blackhawk County and and bring businesses in. So we know how important that is and again, we couldn't do it without all of you. I'll hit on the collaboration part very quickly as everyone has. I cannot say enough for every department in Blackhawk County and what they do for county conservation. Conservation was mentioned in a lot of these presentations and I think it's only because I think we're the biggest beggars of everybody. We, there's not anybody sitting in this room today, these department heads or anybody that probably presented on Tuesday, that we are constantly asking for something. We need help, we need advice, we need something to keep moving. And we aren't very patient people, when we wanna do something, we wanna do it right now. And um so we are constantly after somebody and I and I tell our staff all the time, uh we owe so many favors, we'll never get them all paid. But I want you guys to know that um if you ever ask, we'll do our very best to try to pay some of those favors back because we owe everybody. But it's what makes Conservation very successful and I can't thank all of you enough, so thank you very much, including Mike, who's in our office. We bother him a lot and we shouldn't, but we we do because he's right there, but all that. All that being said, um here goes uh uh twenty twenty-four and what took place. Our second big uh septic system project was at McFarland Park. If you recall, last year, uh we had a very large uh project of the same uh kind at Hickory Hills, we got that finished. And and then we moved on to McFarland Park, that's all finished up now. Yeah, we're talking about waste here and the whole things, but if these things don't function and if you think these things go down, um these parks close. And um they are highly used, Hickory Hills, all of our parks are highly used, but these are so important. Again, funding from ARPA to get this taken care of, um these two systems will be functional, shouldn't have any problem for the next fifty-plus years. So we're so happy to be able to get that done and have that that kind of insurance out there, ready to keep these things going. Gabby brought up our ribbon cutting, um what a huge event. This thing, forty years in the making, this is the last nine and a half miles of the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. We've been waiting again for forty years to get this done. The the program was amazing, uh we were expecting maybe twenty twenty-five people, we had well over a hundred people there. The speakers were fantastic, we had a great day. And um it's just uh it just shows the the support that's in Cedar Valley for uh projects just like this. We were a partner with Lynn County and um they know how important it is too. So what an opportunity, uh you know, for us to be able to get some of this stuff done. So just an amazing accomplishment, um you know, wouldn't have been possible without the ARPA funding. We move on to Division Two of the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. Three bridges that are being built right now, um they have cooled off for the winter time, but they have made amazing progress. They will be finishing these up um early summer, uh is is a great guesstimate for when these things will be finished up. We have done so much uh with this Cedar Valley Nature Trail to put it uh way, way ahead of schedule uh from where it was. Just just an amazing opportunity that that ARPA brought to us, uh to be able to get this trail back on the map. We had eighteen bridges on that section of trail. And I know twenty years ago, we were worried about how these things were going to be taken care of, but they weren't all falling apart. They started to fall apart, folks, as we knew they would. And without the support that we got from in this room, um we wouldn't be sitting where we are. We have about four left, maybe five, uh if I didn't count right, they're in very good shape, we have time now. This put us back functioning and and um uh it's just tremendous tourist attraction. The next thing we'll have to be looking for is overlaying of the initial sixteen miles of trail, um started from Evansdale south down to McFarland Park. But you will see, we have a a picture there of the trail overlay. Within working with some of these bridges, it just made sense to go ahead and pave some of those uh sections of trail. So we did, we have paved about four miles of that, or there will be about four miles of that to knock off from that sixteen miles. So we're getting there, but we squeezed those ARPA dollars right down to the last penny that we possibly could squeeze. We got the most out of them that we could, so tremendous accomplishment for that trail. Some of our, some of our facilities were were starting to get uh in bad shape. This is a high-rise uh restroom facility at Blackhawk Park. It was uh it was in dire need of of some fixing, the floors were. It was in dire need of some fixing. The floors were, didn't have a good drain system. We were able to contract that out. We got a really good plan. You'll see in the far right-hand photo there. There's now some very adequate floor drains in there, which will help with, we won't have the deterioration that we had before. But this restroom facility is critical to that park, and it's heavy used to keep it moving forward. So another great ARPA project. Our natural resources program, growing in leaps and bounds. And so much of it has to do with pollinator programs and different things that are now out there through FSA and through NRCS. But we were able to plant 6.8 acres of pollinator prairie. Now that is, it doesn't sound like a lot, but that is the true pollinator that really carries a lot of forbs and different things like that. It's in a category sort of all in its own. We also were able to establish 179 acres of CRP prairie. One of the things that, that is basically all private landowner. And this is what we really want to try to accomplish. We can only do so much with the property that Blackhawk County owns. But we need to get ahold of those landowners and talk them into, you know, changing those road crops into prairie establishments. And FSA and NRCS have now started to roll some of those CRP payments into a program where there are more forbs in those plantings. They're not all just grass. And so that's what we're working with them now. And we were able, once again, to get 179 acres that planted this year. And we have many on the list for spring already. So this is a program that's growing very quickly. We'll do 40 and a half acres of timber stand improvement yet this winter. That's on the way. And then we were able to direct seed about five acres of nuts that were collected in Harton Reserve. And they were spread out over some of our areas and that will, those are future forest projects that will come along the way. Cedar Island Wildlife Area was a big project this year. The picture in the middle, there used to be a lot of scrubby trees and everything in there. We were able to get that cleaned up and establish a pollinator program in there. And this was, we had a lot of help from the Habitat Stamp Program. And also White Tails Unlimited, they stepped in and helped us promote that program. This is really a great success story. To take a look at this now, this is some of the upland that we have. And this was established in one year, and it's a classic example of what we're doing out there with some of the prairie work that we're doing. And so we're very happy with that program. Casey Lake, a huge project. 139,000 cubic yards of sediment were removed from that lake. We were, we had lost a lot of volume in there, and that's about 50 years of accumulation, but we've got that cleaned out. This lake now has a new life. We don't have a lot of lakes in Blackhawk County. And it's very, very important that this work was done, and we were so happy that we were able to get into that that list with the Department of Natural Resources so that we could get this program going. We are basically getting that finished up. As we sit today, the fish habitat is being placed and done. They were only able to start this week. It's a little behind schedule from what we had hoped for. But it won't take them, I think with good weather, it'll take them about another eight, nine days, something like that, and that will begin. We'll have a little work to do in the spring to clean things up, and that project will be ready to go. The new gate valve is in, and so it's just a matter of when the fish structure, they'll start down by the gate valve or the deepest part of the lake, and they'll start to work their way out. Once they get so far out, we will close that to start to catch snow. And any rain that comes throughout the wintertime, we, if everything goes well, come spring, that lake will be full again. And we will, it's quite an accomplishment, so. These are some of the pictures, some of the additions that we have. Jetties were all reshaped and re-rocked. The dam face was restructured to hold wave action along that. We created these fishing nodes, and there are four of those. They give the public access to the water, to fish, to sit, to enjoy. The stone terrace is just down below the Lakeview Lodge. It's absolutely beautiful. And when that water fills, it will literally fill right to the bottom of that stone terrace. And you'll be able to sit there and enjoy the water and everything that comes with that as you go to visit Hickory Hills. You see some of the fish structure just off to the left of the stone terrace. That's already been in place and is just waiting for the water to come in and cover that up. But this project, it is winding down. It's just amazing that we were able to get this taken care of and given that place a new life. Playground, part of the ARPA project again. Haven't heard a lot of that from me because we've had many, many delays with this. Some of it was materials. We literally just got the last pour-in-place surfacing done Sunday. And that was in Blackhawk Park. We don't have a picture of that one because we just got it done. That has kind of dragged along, but these are amazing additions to Hickory Hills, Sugawoke, McFarland Park, and Blackhawk Park. They will be heavily used and just a tremendous way to spend some of that ARPA dollars that will be used by thousands and thousands. The administration office, the old HVAC system was terrible. This Resnor system that's on the left there, we had a lot of contractors come in there and tell us they didn't even know any of those still existed. So anyway, and a lot of this involved rezoning of that building, so it'll be much more efficient. And so, but the new system is in, it's working beautifully, and we're very, very happy with that. Our environmental education program, needless to say, it's on the cutting edge. It's just one of the best in the Midwest. And they continue to do wonderful things there, just thousands and thousands of kids there, hundreds of programs. Our School of the Wild program is very, very popular. It's getting ready to, they're planning for that to roll out again next year. But we are very proud of that environmental education program. It's cutting edge. We not only work with youth, but we work with the elderly too and senior programs. And that is, that's been very popular. We continue to increase our visits from these people and our activities, and we program around that. So we're very happy to be able to provide that. And then our adult programs, these are always well-attended. We continually find new and fresh information to bring to them and programs to do for them. And again, they're always well-attended. Our community events, our three big ones, Under the Harvest Moon, the Maple Syrup Festival, and then our light shows and those kinds of things. But these programs always go really, really well. We're getting geared up for our Maple Syrup Festival. Under the Harvest Moon was fantastic, completely sold out again. Great fundraiser, and people always have a wonderful time. So those are all going well. Our community events that are underway right now, the Woodland Wonderland. I've just got one more weekend at the Nature Center, and we're, it's been well-attended. If you haven't had a chance to go to the Nature Center and see how they've got the building all fixed up for the festive season. You should go there. They've done a great job with that. And then, of course, our Holiday Light Show has been very popular since we started that in 2020. We started last weekend. We had good attendance, and I think the show is really, really well. It continues to grow each and every year. Businesses continue to work with us, and it's just a lot of fun. So that's going on right now. Any questions at all?
No questions. It's been, I think, a kind of generational, like a once-in-a-generation year for county conservation with some of these investments. Very excited for Casey Lake and Cedar Valley Nature Trail. I remember when I first started, as soon as we were facing, you know, the Wolf Creek Bridge issue. And you guys said, there's a lot more bridges after this, a lot more issues. But it's been amazing. We've been able to preserve and improve that trails so well.
It just looked like, it always seemed like a vow that you could never win. But just little by little, you know, we're able to get it done, so it's there, and we appreciate your support.
Well, a lot of this was due to planning you'd done beforehand. I said, you allow us to do a jumpstart on so many of these projects. So I said, it's tremendous. A thank you, I guess, to you and your staff as well for having those plans in place, and we could jump right on this stuff, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it was nice to have those ready because we kind of got ahead of the game a little bit. And most of those are getting finished up. We don't have too much more out there as far as ARPA goes, so we'll get them.
Yeah, even that, when we were starting to see it, when we were going to be able to expend those dollars and stuff, knowing that there were projects that you had in the backdrop, kind of could just come in and take advantage of those opportunities. Thank you. A lot to be said for planning like that.
It's put us, it's put us light years ahead. It really has, and we're very thrilled with it. We can't thank you guys enough, so very much appreciated.
We can't thank you enough.
Great to see it, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation will be Public Health with Public Health Director.
Okay, Caitlin Emmerich, Public Health Director. I have a longer presentation, so I'm going to go quicker through the slides. But I will, I promise to share the slides with you all, so you can go back and look at anything that you want to. We didn't have a Joint Board of Health, Board of Supervisors meeting this year, so some of the stuff that I would have put in that, I'll put in here. I'm going to talk about what kind of our administration team has been up to, as well as our four operational programs that we have that do day-to-day services. This is just a reminder of our vision and mission that we've had in place for several years and our core values. I'm really excited to incorporate our vision and mission and core values into the county strategic planning process that's happening right now. While I'm up here speaking, the work that is done is really representative of the entire team. At any given time, we have anywhere from 55 to 60 staff members at Public Health. Some of them do multiple programs with their time. And so I'm very grateful for the team and very happy to represent them and the work that they did. A couple of kind of staffing highlights, and we were talking about retention. Our retention rates are trending in the right direction that I'm happy with. And we've had, you know, some changes in a couple of positions this year. So my presentation is a little bit of blending between fiscal year '24 and calendar year '24. But in fiscal year '24, both myself and Ty, who's with me today, are new to our positions. And so we're continuing to learn as a team and kind of get our feet solidly on the ground. Something I don't talk about often, we do have some internal committees just within public health. Or ones that we have, that we send representatives to county committees, those are the ones that are starred. And one of the, one of the most active committees is our Wellness Committee that really looks at, you know, what can we do for employee satisfaction and engagement and things like that. So there's a few photos from wellness events that we have done over the last year. One of our committees is our Advocacy Committee. This is a newer committee. Prior to me, it was really the Public Health Director that did all advocacy work. And I have a little bit of a different take on it. I want public health professionals to feel comfortable with talking about topics that are important to public health. And so we developed a committee and created three advocacy priorities for things that we think are most important in policy and decision-making that will improve the field of public health. Our first one is support for a strong adaptive and responsive public health system. So this is really about public health infrastructure and the importance of investing in public health infrastructure to focus on being prepared, to focus on prevention work, things like that. Our next one is really centered around cancer as a major public health concern. Within the last year, the Cancer in Iowa report was released and noted that Iowa has the second highest rate of new cancers in the nation. Pretty much everyone knows someone or themselves have been impacted by cancer, and so this is important for us to talk about. And also talk about some of the contributing factors to cancer. And then our third one is really around the importance of access to care. With, everyone should have access to respectful, appropriate care for a broad spectrum of services. And so we know that so many of health outcomes or so many of economic or other outcomes in our community hinge around ability to have access to the care that you need, and so that's why that's our third advocacy priority. In 2024, we did some education and outreach around advocacy in our priorities for last year, so there's just a couple of photos. We went to, a group of us went to the Day on the Hill, and we're able to meet with local elected officials. And then we partnered with the Iowa Public Health Association for the Legislative Forum that was held at the Pinecrest Building. And we had pretty good attendance there to just talk about kind of what is public health and get some awareness to that issue. From an administrative perspective, our communications team, they continue to excel with the groundwork laid by Gabby here. They attended 62 community outreach events during fiscal year '24, with 74% of them focusing on our priority populations. And those priority populations are either identified through grants and contracts that we have or kind of departmental identified priority populations. From a strategic planning aspect, we've had a strategic plan in place since fiscal year '22 that goes through fiscal year '27. There are six priority areas part of that plan, 13 goals and 23 objectives. We're making really good progress, given the fact that the plan goes through FY '27. We have 16 of those completed, 14 in progress, and three that we haven't started yet, but there's still time for that. And I just want to kind of point out a couple of the areas that link to the Blackhawk County strategic planning that's currently underway. So these five that are up here are the three plus the two bonus ones that I snuck in to the, to the kind of priorities to link with Blackhawk County strategic planning and the visual of how they link with our strategic plan that we currently have underway. So I'm really looking forward to kind of merging those two and really looking for as much alignment as possible in the strategic planning process with county. A couple of the initiatives that we've worked on over the last year. We had a building health equity training that was in collaboration with Lynn County and Johnson County. We had representatives from all three departments work together to do a public health-specific training for local public health on health equity. And so there's a couple of pictures from that event and the linkages to our strategic plan in terms of centering equity and workforce development training. We, all three departments agreed that it was a really beneficial experience, and we're going to continue to do that in the future with new staff that are onboarding to our departments and things like that. We've also been heavily focusing on workforce development planning. The purple sheet that's up on the wall that is in the photo there is a sticky wall. And where we took all of the feedback through staff surveys and national guiding documents and mapped it in terms of priority to develop our workforce development plan. And Lisa and I have the opportunity to present at Nature 316 in Detroit on some of the work that we were doing in workforce development planning. We've also been heavily focusing on customer satisfaction, process and procedures in our strategic planning process over the last year. In terms of community health improvement, it's been a very heavy year for community health improvement because we've been doing community health assessments this year. So we follow a national framework called Mobilizing Through Action for Planning and Partnerships. It's a tool that's offered through the National Association for County and City Health Officials. This is kind of the visual model of the process of that framework. What we've done in 2024 is reaffirm the mission for the community health improvement planning work and identify our community. So we can better know who are we trying to reach and what are we trying to do with community as we move through this process. We have a steering committee that was reestablished and confirmed and have many collaborations, seems to be the topic of the day. So we have many external partners that work with us on this process. Community health improvement is intrinsically collaborative, and we cannot do it without partnership with other entities. Um, community health improvement is intrinsically collaborative and we cannot do it without partnership, um, with other, um, entities in our local public health system. Um, and so through that steering committee and work groups that have come with it, we, um, I, and when I say we, I really mean our core planning team of our epidemiologists and our public health planner, um, designed and launched assessments of the community. So both windshield or walking ser- survey assessments and a community survey. I hope, um, I hope everyone had the opportunity to complete the community survey that's since closed. And, um, the data actually will be presented this afternoon at our steering committee meeting. Um, and just an interesting little fact about the windshield and walking survey, uh, this was done through the help of a intern that we had. That she, actually her mode of transportation to get to the Pinecrest Building was using the, um, public transit system. And so she had a very real-life, um, experience of kind of how individuals interact with our community. Our current, uh, community health improvement strategic priorities, and this is gonna be a re- a reminder, um, it really focuses on food insecurity and mental health and trauma, um, with kind of health equity as a foundational principle, and then acknowledging that we have some emerging issues in, um, access to care and sexually transmitted infections. Um, for food insecurity, for that, uh, priority, some of the work that's been done over the last year or so has really been focused on food insecurity and a focus on food deserts and community gardens. Um, and so our nutrition team and our community health worker team have, um, worked with, um, newcomers to the community to, um, in partnership with the University of Northern Iowa, um, to build skills for new farmers, for them to be able to establish farming practices and, um, to, um, create businesses out of that. So there are forty-eight plots at Highland Community Garden, um, that is now kind of being transitioned to be managed through the Highland Neighborhood Association, and thirty-two plots at, um, Central Christian Church. So some really great success stories for, um, community gardening in our, um, in our community. And then from mental health, um, strategic issues and accomplishments are, uh, the, the QPR training, uh, question persu- persuade and refer. About five hundred and eighty-nine individuals have been trained with that, um, and we're, uh, currently actively in partnership with Waterloo U. City Council on how to, um, continue to incorporate, uh, that training and, um, have mental health and trauma as a focus, um, that we can continue to work on with their partnership. From an advancing equity standpoint, this is another community health improvement, uh, model, uh, that we're, we've been working on for several years now. It's a, in collaboration with many partners across the community. And, um, some successes from this year are we have updated our, our logo. Um, we've, uh, kind of again established a steering committee and really committed to having, uh, communication and data hubs where we can know what we're trying to measure and measure that success and be able to communicate with others in our community to again foster that collaboration. And then have sector working groups that might be working on individual, um, aspects of advancing equity in the community. And, um, and kind of another thing that's not represented in that gear model is cross-cutting issues that we've seen. Um, so transportation, multilingual, um, populations, childcare, those cut across all aspects and all sectors of, um, the advancing equity work. And so one of the things that just in the last couple of months, does, the, uh, committee has decided that they wanna work on first, because there's so much to work on, um, is how can we support the multilingual, uh, cross-cutting issues across all sectors, and so that's kind of a focus area for now. Um, another success story is back in April, um, Kingsley Batway from Unity Point was able to share some of the best practices from Unity Point that, um, they have integrated in with the, the big broader group of individuals working in advancing equity. So that was, um, a really great learning experience for me, as well as many others. There is a, um, event that we're having in January that is open, uh, for anyone that's interested in participating. Um, it's a poverty simulation and we're doing a little bit of a different spin on it for how the poverty sim- simulation, um, can include individuals that, um, might have, um, a language other than English as their primary language. And so, um, if anyone is interested, we encourage, um, encourage all participants to sign up for that. And then from a preparedness standpoint, um, successes are the development of Healthcare Coalition. That was actually kind of came out of a tabletop that we did and identified that Healthcare Coalition would be beneficial to create. Uh, Stop the Bleed trainings, which, uh, Rory mentioned in his presentation that Brad has been integral in helping with, um, been really working on getting all of our new staff trained in our incident command systems. And we do have an event that everyone knows their role and know how to respond, and we can respond in a very organized and structured way. Um, so I think we're nearly there, um, and have completed several exercises, including, um, exercising our continuity of operations plan, a winter weather, uh, tabletop with our healthcare partners, and a tuberculosis tabletop in partnership with the University of Northern Iowa Student Health. So from an operational perspective, our, we have four operational areas. The first is disease surveillance and investigation, this is our, um, unit that primarily works on communicable disease control. Um, these are just some trends from kind of year to year, um, some of which I've talked about before. The graph at the bottom is T- TB disease prevalence count. So in two thousand and twenty-three, um, was the year that we really saw that, um, increase in, uh, TB prevalence in terms of number of active TB cases that our TB team was managing. We've, uh, in two thousand and twenty-four, it's not quite over yet, um, but we have seen a, a decrease from, uh, two thousand and twenty-three. It, it's far from kind of where our average was historically, um, but I'm very happy to see that it's going down. Um, and, um, a couple of successes, um, related to TB. So the TB team was awarded, uh, a U.S. TB Elimination Champion Award, um, from the Centers for Disease Control in two thousand and twenty-four. And Florina Seibach, who's our community health worker that is working with our, uh, team, um, was able to attain a community health worker certificate and certified medical interpreter, which just really helps, um, efficiency, um, and productivity of our TB team. Um, also a disease fit, disease surveillance and investigation team, um, was able to get a grant from the National Association of County and City Health Officials to work on syphilis prevention and, um, control. Um, and I have a couple of videos after this, but they really worked with two primary target populations, um, pregnant women and, um, sexually active individuals aged fifteen to forty-four years. So proud to show the videos that they worked on. This one is for, uh, targeted towards pregnant individuals.
You would do anything for your baby. It's simple. Start by getting tested for syphilis. Ask about it during your OBGYN visits and help your baby start life right. Talk, test, treat, prevent with Black Hawk County Public Health. You would do.
And then the next video was the targeted towards sexually active individuals fifteen to forty-four.
We need reminders for important things like birthdays and doctor appointment, and this is a reminder to get tested for syphilis. Men account for the majority of syphilis cases with common symptoms or no signs at all. Talk, test, treat, prevent with Black Hawk County Public Health.
So these campaigns were made possible through, um, the grant funds that we have. Typically, we don't have a lot of funds for, um, doing advertising with, um, public health topics. And so we usually leverage grant funds to do those, and so we were able to do that in this case. Um, and then our disease surveillance and investigation team also, um, did quite a few projects with academic partners and students, um, to really kind of work on future workforce needs. Um, this is a photo of Macy Hansen, who was, uh, prac- did a practicum with us from the University of Iowa. And she got her, uh, Master's of Public Health in Epidemiology, and we had several other, uh, intern projects. So kind of this is in addition to normal duties, mentoring, uh, these students and kind of guiding and leading them through their projects. Our community health team, um, so our nutrition team, which are in the schools, uh, to do pick-up-your-snack during the school year, reached, um, almost seventeen hundred kids in seven schools, um, and worked on, um, this physical activity project, um, where they did sensory sten- sensory stencil installations out of Ty Custer, um, to really kind of promote kids to be physically active when they're outside, um, to kind of move from stencil to stencil. Um, from a child and adolescent health perspective, so this is primarily our child adolescent health grant, we, um, reached three thousand eight hundred and fifty-three newly eligible Medicaid, uh, clients to inform them of their Medicaid benefits and encourage, um, that they establish a primary care provider if they don't have one already, things like that. Um, completed seventeen presumptive eligibility, uh, applications for Medicaid. And we're really able to work on, uh, family engage- engagement, which is a requirement of the grant, but really it's bringing people in for an advisory group that are members of the community in key priority populations and getting their feedback on how we can better provide services, it's kind of a community advisory group. Our first five team, uh, continues to be really successful with engaging practices. Um, so primary providers can refer children with any developmental concerns, um, for case management to our first five program. Um, eighty-five, or, excuse me, eighty-one percent of practices within Black Hawk County referred in FY twenty-four, which is a really successful, um, rate. And, um, overall, we served two hundred and twenty-four families, um, in our four county service area. We continue to have the Iowa Get Screen Program, which is colorectal cancer screening for individuals that, um, need assistance with access to care, um, by providing, uh, fit tests and colonoscopies, um, those are generally referred through our medical partners. Um, so we continue to offer that program. We also continue to offer, uh, the Care for Yourself Cancer Prevention Early Detection Program. In FY twenty-four, um, we served two hundred and sixty-two people and assisted with two hundred and thirty mammograms and assisted, um, three women that ultimately were diagnosed with breast cancer. And so while that seems like it's maybe not a success, um, the, that early detection, um, is really important for the outcome of, um, cancer. So that's why these programs are so important. Um, from a clinical perspective, we continue, this is the floor plan of the mobile clinic that, um, is being purchased through ARPA funds. Um, continue to kind of, uh, secure that contract and work with the vendor, um, in the design and things. That's currently all underway, but essentially the mobile clinic, this is the floor plan of it, it'll have two rooms and an ADA accessible bathroom. So we'll be able to see many people with this unit for a variety of different programs and services. Um, our clinic team also worked on some HPV prevention, and I have another video to show, um, here.
A self, he can show a lot, but it can't show everything. Most people will get the HPV virus in their lifetime, and it can cause cancer. But there's a vaccine to prevent this. Are you protected? Get the vaccine and shield yourself from HPV.
So really kind of the, the HPV vaccine prevention, vaccine promo- promotion, my goodness, my tongue is like giving up on me. Um, vaccine promotion is, um, really transition from a vaccine message to a cancer prevention message, um, because of the linkage between the vaccine and the cancers that it can prevent for. Um, so that's something that Iowa HHS really wants us to focus in on and that we've, um, really leaned into as well. We also partnered with Iowa Total Care on their Shoes for Shots program, where, um, clients under Iowa Total Care, if they came in to get HPV vaccine, then they could get, um, shoes, and this was like right before back to school, they could get shoes from Shoe Car and Hall. Um, that was a benefit through Iowa Total Care. In terms of clinical services, um, we had, uh, just over sixteen hundred medical encounters and a variety of different outreach services and also in our clinic, um, within, uh, FY twenty-four. And our childcare nurse consultant, uh, which are, their two beautiful faces are pictured here, um, had almost six hundred visits for technical assistance contacts in FY twenty-four. Um, and really worked on leaning into, uh, tooth brushing and hand washing initiatives with childcare centers for, um, kind of, um, public health benefit. Um, so that tooth brushing at twenty-four locations and hand washing at, uh, twenty-seven locations, uh, with an overall, um, impact of six hundred and fourteen children with special health needs. Also, we're able to get benefit from our, uh, childcare consultants. Our oral health team continues to see lots and lots of kiddos in our community, over three thousand children served in thirty-one schools in FY twenty-four, um, applying almost three thousand fluoride applications and nine hundred and seven sealants. In our, um, doula project, this is a pilot project through the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services, we saw twelve clients through, through three active doulas with one, uh, mentor and one doula lead as one. Um, we found that, um, the client is, um, not the limiting factor, there are plenty of, um, pregnant individuals that want to be seen. It's a workforce, um, with having doula, certified doulas in our community. So we're really working on training more doulas so they can then serve our pregnant individuals through the doula project. And then finally, our environmental health team, um, these are, uh, mostly numbers, the first couple of slides, but kind of seeing the impact that we're doing with, um, our safety inspections, our permitting, uh, volume. Our environmental health assessments, um, this includes our collaboration with the City of Waterloo, um, through the, um, Housing and Urban Development Grant, uh, with Health and Homes assessments and lead inspection risk assessments. Um, our, our environmental health team, um, was at twenty-six outreach events, um, and then from a food safety aspect, performed over two thousand three hundred food safety inspections, really many more, for a variety of different reasons. And, um, one of the things I'm most excited about, kind of skipping past the numbers quickly, is, uh, professional development that our environmental team is involved in and leads across the state of Iowa. So our envi- so our team gave four presentations at our public health conference this last year. Um, are actively involved in our National Environmental Health Association, um, and, uh, the Iowa Environmental Health Association. So we have, um, several staff members that are, um, in board, uh, positions for the Iowa Environmental Health Association. And, um, Black Hawk County Public Health was recognized as the Health Department of the Year in two thousand and twenty-four. So our impact in their professional, um, organization is a, is a very great and positive one. Any questions for me?
Yeah, I, I know that, I think, I believe that our Public Health Department really raises the bar for public health departments across Iowa. I know that many look to this department as model and guidance, and so I'm just really proud of the work that, that you're doing and really happy to have you as the director.
Thank you, I agree.
Rushing through that, I appreciate though all the facts and informationally provided, so short, in a short time like that. But it shows a lot, I was gonna say, things the department is working on and your staff, so yeah. Lot of outreach too.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
All right, our next presentation will be from the Sheriff's Department with Sheriff-elect, uh, Nate Knapp.
All right. Well, um, I think I took my short presentation request a little more to heart than some of my peers, so this shouldn't take too long, we'll get this wrapped up. A lot of good stuff there. We're gonna start off with, uh, one of our ARPA projects as well, um, with the, uh, it actually started a year ago, but then finished up earlier this year with our clerical and front lottery remodel. Um, obviously a big part of that was getting some more spacing and getting some barriers between, but we're able to do a lot of other improvements with that as well. Um, front window when you come in now, it's a lot larger, um, you can't really see it, but around the corner there, there's a lower counter that's a little, um, makes us ADA compliant there. Um, looking in, it, it looks a lot more crowded than it is, um, but that picture on the right there, it's got the, uh, four workstations in it, and that used to have seven grand in that space, so there's more actually up front from where I'm at, and then there's a little bit more around the back there, so. Um, and then you can't really see it too, but on top of those barriers, there's actually about a ten-inch glass pane that keeps them too. So a lot more barrier for the germ protection from that kind of stuff. And then, um, it also allows a little more privacy when they're on the phone calls and they're at their workstation, so, and the dual purpose there. This is one big thing, this sex offender registry room, this sits just to the left of all those workstations that you're there. One of our clerch fails always has to go out and get information from the sex offenders when they come in, update their stuff when they check in. It used to just have a single door with a small window on it, and that always made him feel the It used to just have a single door with a small window on it, and that always made them feel a little uncomfortable when they were out there. So we were able to just take that whole wall down and make it glass, so now, not on where they're visible, but the offender sits back in that back corner too. So if something would happen where the clerical person wants to get out, there's actually a second door there too, where there's two doors where they can get out without uh. So it just makes them a lot safer, so between the comfort of feeling safe with the glass and the actual escape route, so it's just a vast improvement for our staff there. So the picture on the left there, excuse me. When you first come in the front doors, that's that's what you're looking at straight ahead there. There used to be that great big front desk that sat there. Um but with the advent of the video visitation, we don't have to have that there anymore. So that position was eliminated, that desk was taken out. Um and behind those glass doors there is the elevators to the jail. By the last thirty years, we've been lucky, there was kind of a oversight when the place was built. Every exterior door in that building has two sets of doors, we have to go through one and then you have to go through the other. That elevator could open up on that side, and if, whether by mechanical error or human error, if it opened up and there was an inmate out there, they would have had a straight shot out the front door. Running around the front desk that was there. So those doors are now getting tied into our security system, so even if those elevator doors do open up on the wrong side. We've now got a second barrier there to container inmates, so just a lot safer there. As you roll across there, the uh computers used for the weapons for missile, you can kind of be out in the middle bit of the thing there. Now they're away, they've got their own space to to be in, so the public's out of the way when they're using those. And they're right across from the glass from the clerical staff, so they're able to see them, help them, monitor them with that. And then one of the other things I didn't like, um what we always had set up was if someone came in the front counter to be. Uh turn the pills in for time served, so they had to be searched if somebody was complaining about something, just getting irate, whatever, there really wasn't any place to take them. This hallway now, as you look at the first two pictures, there's a door kind of to the right there, this hallway is leading from inside of that. We can bring them in there now, we can pat people down, we can search them, so there's a little more humanity for them, that they're not being exposed to that all in the lobby there. And then also, like I said, if somebody's getting upset, if somebody's having a bad day, filing a bad complaint and that, we can bring them there and have a little more privacy for for them. And then there'll also be, I didn't get a picture, but there's a room just off of this where we'll have a second fingerprint machine. And that's where we talked about, I don't have to take people, because every teacher, real estate agent, whoever else to come in, nursing students. To get their fingerprints done, we no longer have to take them back to intake, those will be able to be done up there. And I should actually be getting that machine here hopefully in the next few weeks. Kind of the part that really started precipitating this was the visitation area though. So when we switched to the video visitation, there were six of those kiosks that you see on the left side there, that were all on the one wall, and there was virtually no barrier between them. So again, as far as germ spreading goes, they were sitting right on top of each other. And again, just no privacy for the people as they're talking to their loved one who's in jail. Um now those six kiosks are actually spread out on two walls, a lot more privacy there. The two that are on the right side, as you go down, they're actually in rooms. Um these guys don't have the door. There wasn't room there to make those ADA compliant with the door to make it where they could get in and turn around. So we've got two ADA compliant and the other four at least are still a lot more private, a lot more social distancing, which is a word hopefully we don't have to use again for any longer. Honoring our history there, um the one on the left there, that's the one Yolanda last week was talking about, where uh his dad is actually one of our first reserve officers, so that's in there. And I think that was, that's pretty neat to see a picture that he and his mom took of that picture last week. One big thing then moving on from that, um at the start of this year, we were down about sixteen officers. I need, if I'm fully stationed in jail, I've got fifty eight between deputies and detention officers. And we were down about sixteen, so we were, I had people working overtime left and right, um people hard for them to get time off. Um over the course of the year, we've been able to build it up here, as a few weeks ago, we were within about four. Of being fully staffed, at least in the jail, still a couple down elsewhere. A lot of that goes to give Amanda her credit staff and Abby with a lot of the marketing stuff, um they've been a big help in that, doing a lot of job fairs, a lot of that kind of stuff. Um we've also got one of her own deputies, Kate, a little bit more has stepped up, um huge on the social media side of things for us too. So um we've got like now seven retirements coming up here between now and the end of the year. I wouldn't have admitted at the time, but earlier this year I was kind of starting to panic that uh if we didn't get some of those up and then we threw seven retirements in. We were gonna be in a world of hurt. Um so come the first year, we're gonna be back down quite a bit, but we've got a lot of people going through both the deputy and detention officer um hiring process. And I'm honestly not too worried about it, we're gonna we're gonna hurt for January, February, but I'll get those people hired and get them trained up. But I really felt pretty good about where we're at and at the start of this year, I certainly couldn't have told you that. Um kind of a neat thing, we did, Karen reached out to us or to me earlier this year or in the fall. And asked if uh I could suggest someone to do de-escalation training for some of her election workers. And then we actually have our own de-escalation training officer, so I was able to have him kind of tweak what he does, because obviously with us, we de-escalate until it's time. To escalate back up with the with the staff that she had, obviously it was de-escalate until it's time to get yourself to safety. She had about four hundred volunteer workers and about half of them were able to come in, we did two different sessions. About a hundred people each, um where we were able to do some good training and got a lot of really good feedback for that, so that was kind of neat. To partake with elections and hope that happened for them. Um this, we were just presented with last week, um every year the state jail inspector goes around and um. Does every jail in the in the state, um does his inspection on it. And then based off that, um adherence with local, state, federal laws, um during that, he interviews staff, he interviews the inmates. Several of each of them. And then just based on cleanliness, based on professionalism of the staff, based on security of the jail and stuff. Um he presents one to a small jail and go media jail and to a large jail as well. And uh this year we were awarded the best of the best as far as the the large jail division goes, so. I was presented with that last week, but again, that's really more a reflection of the staff and everybody we've got over there, so. So I'll throw this one on to the uh everybody working across the street there.
Still, congratulations.
Thank you. So that is, I think Rory's guys got that hung in the air for us this morning, so. And that is all I have.
Thank you, I appreciate all accomplishments this year and uh really looking forward to working with you the next four years.
Yeah, the many more to come this next year, right?
Absolutely.
Looking forward to it.
I'm gonna do some videos.
Uh we'll take a five-minute uh recess and then um return to the meeting, so. You'll call this meeting the Blackout County Board of Supervisors, back to order. Uh we'll next move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors, approve expenditures that the county auditor authorized in direction to issue payments. Give the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
Second.
Moved to seconded, this meeting here.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is three hundred seventy-one thousand, three hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. And of that, the Sheriff's Sixty Forty Fund is three thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. We are making, continue to make some payments for ARPA projects and construction projects. About eighty-six thousand, four twenty-three-ten for ARPA. And another twenty thousand, ninety-one-seventy for construction. Other kind of larger payments, we did make a large payment to our auditors this week, sixty thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars. And also Peter's Construction for the courthouse renovations of fifty-one thousand, seven thirty-eight-eighty. Everything appears to be in order. Any questions for me today?
Questions, Board?
Nope.
Alright, uh this is a resolution, uh roll call please, Mr. Bier.
All?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Little? Javka? Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Next we'll receive project updates from department heads, elected officials. Alright, I think we're good. Moving on to uh item six, uh minutes approved from the December third, twenty twenty-four meeting.
So moved.
Second.
So moved to seconded, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, it's approved. Uh we will have three hearings coming up later on in the meeting. Versus on the Washburn Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, uh the next will be on ordinance number seven-seven dash two-eight-nine. Rezone request uh by Josh and Haley Sprague. And the ordinance number seven-seven dash two-nine-zero, rezone request from Andrew Scherz. Next we'll move on to the consent agenda, this will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, uh any discussion and questions? Hearing none, uh roll call please, Mr. Bier.
Layla?
Yes.
All?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Now we'll move on to other business, this is a motion of the holiday schedule for Blackout County offices for twenty twenty-five. Be approved as follows, uh New Year's uh January first, twenty twenty-six, Martin Luther King Junior Day. January twentieth, twenty twenty-five, units one, four, six, and eight, in non-bargaining. Uh President's Day, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh Friday, uh April eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh Memorial Day, uh May twenty-sixth, Juneteenth, June nineteenth. Independence Day, July fourth, uh Labor Day, September first, Veterans Day, November eleventh. Uh Thanksgiving Day, the twenty-seventh, uh the day after Thanksgiving, the twenty-eighth. Uh uh Christmas is Christmas, uh December twenty-fifth, and floating Christmas holiday on December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, uh any discussion and questions?
So we always see January a little bit ahead, New Year's, so you know that looks a little weird, twenty twenty-six, but um and then uh we do work Christmas Eve next year, so that is true. Um the floating happens on Christmas days, uh Thursdays, and the floating ha- holiday happens on Friday, so, thank you.
Alright, any discussion and questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Um item B, this is a motion of the personal requisition for civilian sergeant. Full-time reposition with a start date after December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, approved as recommended by uh Nathan Knapp, jail administrator.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to seconded, Nate?
Good morning, Board. Um this is a new position, but it's not an additional position. Currently, well, just in the jail, we have ten sergeants, um they've always been sworn since uh we've been in existence really. Um but with the sort of use detention officers about seven, eight years ago now. Um we're now at about forty civilian detention officers in the jail, so it's time to start giving some of them a career path. And um so we'll be implementing the civilian sergeants in with the sworn sergeants just through attrition, so we're not gonna take anyone's position away. But uh going forward, we'll kind of run two separate lists where we can either confirm whether from the civilian side or the sworn side. Which is really more of a reflection of what the working staff is over there, so.
So how many of those positions then do you expect to have?
Again, there's ten total sergeants, so it's kind of gonna be, I'm gonna run dual lists, and whoever the best choice is, whether it's on the civilian side or the sworn side, we'll go with that first, so. Um currently, the sworn sergeants are roughly, depending on the staff, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen percent above top deputy. The civilian sergeants will be ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen above top civilian pay. So they kind of mirror each other in that respect, um that'll actually be a little bit of a cost savings, not significant. A little bit on that side, but again, just to clarify on that, it is a new position, but not an additional position, so.
We appreciate that, thanks.
You feel your discussion and questions? This is a motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item C, discussion on body cameras, evidence management systems, and tasers.
Afternoon, Board.
Yeah, not quite.
Almost, almost. Um, how are you IT Director? Um I have just a short slide I'd like to go over with you guys, but um. Back in October, the Board approved to move forward with uh the uh new body cam and evidence management systems. With Axon pending uh contract review. For next Tuesday's agenda, I would like, I will request for the contract to be uh approved and signed by the Chair. Uh but before then, I would like to just kind of provide a short slide and just kind of go over everything again and just make sure there are any additional questions you guys may have. Promise this will be much shorter than the thing I was earlier, so.
That's alright.
Uh so just recapping how we got here, the current system is, it's on its, it's on its seventh year of life, it's, it's, it's dying. Uh we're constantly running out of space, so that's not a great experience for a lot of our deputies, and and it is a safety concern. Um so we went to our peak, we want to find the latest, greatest uh hardware and software that will make everything efficient for everyone. And and of course, seek those uh new features that we, our current system doesn't have, so that way we maintain transparency and safety for all. Uh so what is in the box with the ten-year contract that was uh that was presented to us? So uh fifty-two body cam, body cams, uh I believe eight of those will go to county conservation rangers, who are sworn officers. Twenty-one in-car cameras, um I will note that the original bid had a quote for twenty cameras. Uh we did forget to count for one car, so it is a slight increase that will be reflected when I provide the information for you. It wasn't, it is, it is an amount that's an increase, but it wasn't a huge amount, but I just wanted to make sure that that's full, full disclosure there. Um so twenty-one in-car cameras, and they all have the uh automatic license plate readers. Uh with the body cams, those body cams are refreshed every two point five years, so you get the first one and then at that point on, they replace them. With whatever latest model is available. Uh and for the in-car cameras, that's done at the halfway point of the ten-year program, so at five years, they'll be replaced. Uh they're also going to receive forty-four tasers that includes the virtual reality training. Uh I believe they get two, two headsets of those, and then an interview room camera system. And I believe that's two cameras for two rooms plus an outside kiosk uh to see what's going on and a, and that also includes a fiber refresh.
Does that make the last year for the body camera refresh at seven point five years?
Correct, correct, yeah. And then as the following year, if we choose to renew, that's, that'll be a decision by the Board, so. And then, so reasonable like trails, Axon, trying to summarize this as sure as possible, uh unlimited storage, that's, that's like absolutely huge. The other big thing is that data stays in the United States. It is uh, so there's a certification called FET ramp, we'll go on the nerdy details. It is a big certification, it it truly ensures that all this information, which should be confidential, stays in the United States, which is a huge thing. By far, their their evidence management system is the most robust, easiest to use compared to to the other competitors. It's not even close, it's, it's just so much better. No questions asked warranty, a lot of them offer that, just want to reiterate, reiterate, uh if anything goes wrong with the devices, body cam is damaged in any way.
And it's immediate too, right?
It's immediate, because they're gonna give us a few spares on hand, um so something happens by accident or whatever, it will get replaced right away. Uh twenty-four-seven support, um they assign a dedicated uh support specialist to us for any issues we have. So we get that same person or that same position for ten years, uh which is next, that way we're not calling someone randomly, we're getting that. So person within business hours, I think after hours would probably go to a health center. Simplified sharing, I think that was one of the big things that um county attorney Brian Williams really pointed out. It is, it is easy to share data with other prosecutors, other agencies. It's as simple as clicking an email, and here you go, this is what you get, and we can even have a sort of a self-destruct link where it expires after a certain time. And the biggest thing is the license plate readers, like huge game changer, that is one of the, a- as I've talked to Waterloo and Cedar Falls officers. It is the best feature ever, like they're, they're driving in their car, they don't have to not pay attention, pay attention to the road and and use their tough, but. It just, they drive, it automatically texts, so if, and then, and then they can make that determination if if that, if that flags for something, they can, they can react to that. Um huge, I mean, there was a, I think, I don't know, you know the story about that one?
I can speak to a couple of stories where that's benefited us just in the last few months, um without us even having that, but from other agents having it. One earlier this year, we're working a human trafficking case that started off here in Blackout County. Um we knew she ended up out in LA, um started working with the LA County Sheriff's Office, LAPD on it. Um and somewhat were able to figure out who she was with, what car she was in, but by then that car had already left LA and driven to San Diego. Um but through the license plate readers, it's pretty much the entire state of California, so. We're actually able to follow that car to a hotel in San Diego. And then I've actually got a friend who works for the sheriff's office out there, we were able to call him. And within a half hour, we had somebody there and had placed with that girl. Never would have happened without that. And then just to keep it more locally, we had a robbery here in the county, one of our community sources up in the county earlier this year. Um got good video from it, um guy took off, got his license plate, put it out there, and about two hours south of here, uh deputy met that car. Because we had the license plate in the system, it pinged him that uh was used in a potentially armed robbery. And uh we had our robbery suspect arrested the next day on just two cars that would have met otherwise, so. So some people get worried about license plate reader being a little big brotherish or whatever, but it's like we could really care less about the little stuff, but it's these big things. I mean, just in the last few months, like I said, we've, I'll wrap up a human trafficking thing, again, an armed robbery. but it's these big things, I mean, just in the last few months, like I said, we've, I'll wrap up a human trafficking thing and armed robbery with it, so. And then all these systems will tie together, so we'll be able to see things that other people aren't too. And it's obviously just runs a big safety thing, too. Say that deputy down there would have done just a traffic stop for speeding or something on this, he wouldn't have had any idea that this guy potentially had just committed an armed robbery the night before. So, let's that officer know before he gets up there too, that this is, this is more than just a speaker, so.
Safety.
Yes.
Thanks, Nate.
And just lastly, there's a huge audit trail, like the evidence is tamper-proof, that it's going to be one or two people that can approve the destruction of anything. And so, it's, there's a big audit trail, everything everyone does, we can see. So, that, that helps with accountability, lots of grain in the commissions, can't even, I won't even go into it, but it's very complicated how, how deep it can go. And so, if, if the contract would be signed on, after the next board meeting, Axon provided what a tentative outline, timeline would be. I won't read that, I'll just leave that for you guys. If you guys have any additional questions?
If it's, yeah, such a newest and greatest thing, you want to know when you can get it.
Any questions, Board?
Was that your last slide?
That, that was my last slide, but I'll just leave that up for you guys to see.
Questions?
Yep.
That's why I said you kind of anticipated our question, probably, unless we had a.
I appreciate you giving us the update and the amazing.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm glad you brought it up beforehand instead of us, you know, after the fact, so thank you.
Thank you, Al.
All right, thank you.
That's all you work on.
All right, we will now move on to our first hearing, it is eleven thirty-four AM. This is a hearing on proposed twenty twenty-four Washburn Sanctuary Sewer Improvement Project. The first is a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication, notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next is a motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments are received.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, were there any written comments, Mr. Peter?
No sir.
And are there any oral comments today? All right, hearing none, this is a motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next is the bids to be received, open and read, received deadline is, was December ninth at three o'clock PM.
Good morning, everybody, we have two bids, which we prepared to have the first list for today. This, I believe, is a bid bond for construction agreement only first. Other pious, I believe. All right, their total bid is one hundred four thousand, nine hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. One oh four, nine nine two, point five zero. Our second bid is from JQ Construction. Do you have a bid bonds? Their total bid is one hundred twenty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. One twenty-three, three eighty.
Go.
Both below our estimates, so hopefully that's very good news as well, thank you.
All right, next is a motion of the board supervisors to receive, review, place on file the bids to allow time to review said bids, as recommended, shall be verified and instructed.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. It is now eleven thirty-seven AM, this is a hearing on proposed ordinance number seven-seven dash two-eight-nine, Sprague rezone. The first is a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication, notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is a motion to waive the first reading as notice was published on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, in Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier, in accordance with requirements of code of Iowa, and publication was approved on the request submitted by Josh and Haley Sprague, to rezone four point seven, four point two seven acres from A Agricultural District, AR Agricultural Residential District in an order to allow for the construction of a new single-family home located east of one-one-oh-one-one South Keenfield Road.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Next is a motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments were received and placed on file.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any written comments, Mr. Peter?
No sir.
Thank you.
The African wishes to rezone four point two seven acres from A to AR in order to construct a new single-family home. The African is requesting to rezone a new two point seven acre area east of eleven thousand eleven South Keenfield Road. The property currently has a one point four three acre section that is zoned AR and due to the existing area not being a full one and a half acres, the African needs to rezone the one point five seven acre portion. The site has to have the ability to be split in the additional rezone that will allow this subdividing. The African plans to level an area to put the home on and pull small trees on the lot that were planted by birds. They are proposing to plant grass on a minor slope to prevent erosion and the land was once horse pasture. The site has a land evaluation score of forty and a least score of one fifty-eight, indicating low agricultural value. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request with a five-zero vote at their regular meeting on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
All right, any further, further oral comments today? Hearing none, all those in favor to close the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, the hearing is closed. Next is a resolution to suspend the rules requiring the board supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call please, Mr. Peter.
Layla?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Item five, this is ordinance adoption, the ordinance amending, ordinance number thirty-six has amended the Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation zoning ordinance adopted, adopted February second, nineteen ninety-nine by adding subsection number two-eight-nine to section six, B, resorting certain property as, as described on the above requests submitted by Josh and Haley Sprague and to consider the same for adoption, if adopted, will be known as ordinance number seven-seven dash two-eight-nine.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call please, Mr. Peter.
Paul?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. We'll now move on to item F, it is eleven forty-one AM. This is a hearing on proposed ordinance number seven-seven dash two-nine-zero, the shares rezone. First is a motion to receive and place a file of proof of publication of notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item two, this is a motion to waive the first reading as notice was published on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier, in accordance with requirements of code of Iowa, and publication was approved and on the requested, request submitted by Andrew Scherrs to rezone one point five acres from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District in order to allow for the separation of the home from the farmland located at seven oh three-one East Dunkerton Road.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? None, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, the motion carries. Next is a motion to close the hearing as oral and written comments were received and placed on file.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, any written comments, Mr. Peter?
No sir.
Thank you.
See, Lexi Schneider, planner. The African wishes to rezone one point five acres from A to AR in order to separate the home from the farmland for ownership purposes. The parcel is large enough to accommodate one developed lot that will meet the lot and size requirements for the AR Agricultural Residential District by being greater than one and a half acres in size and wider than hundred and fifty feet. The site has a land evaluation score of ninety-seven and a least score of two seventy-three, indicating high agricultural value. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request at their regular meeting on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four with a four-zero-one vote, as Andrew Scherrs did have to abstain.
Any further oral comments? Hearing none, a motion for, to close the hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, hearing is closed. We will now move on to the resolution to suspend the rules requiring the board supervisors consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those, this is a resolution, roll call please, Mr. Peter.
Paul?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Next is ordinance adoption, that the ordinance amending, number, ordinance number thirty-six has amended the Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation zoning ordinance adopted February second, nineteen ninety-nine by adding subsection number two-nine-oh to section six, B, resorting certain property as described on the above requests submitted by Andrew Scherrs and to consider the same for adoption and if adopted, will be known as ordinance number seven-seven dash two-nine-zero.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call please, Mr. Peter.
Layla?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Item ten, any reports or information from the board?
I think we were just going to, not need to take action, but we wanted to make it official, I guess, of letting the staff know that we weren't going to be having the board meet. Or the.
Two weeks, sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, so no meeting the week of the twenty-third.
And I was thankful to your email grant, I guess, that you had checked the staff and that was, I think, doable.
All right, we will give the, and all staff emails and shout, or at least department head email, shout for my everybody. Any other reports or information?
Just, reminds Taff, but next Thursday, we'll be hosting the second annual Blackhawk County Holiday Party at my home, so excited to keep that tradition going. Last year was a lot of fun and I expect this year will be even more fun, so, decided. We've been working hard, the house is all decorated, almost finished, so. If you drive by, it looks like it's finished, but, all right.
All right, any other reports or information? All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This meeting is adjourned, thank you.